So, thank you very much. This is the first meeting of the South Burlington School Board following our approved budget and the reelection of our school board members, Elizabeth Fitzgerald and Bridget Burkhart. So, welcome. The first order of business is to elect a chairperson, and so I would, at this point, like to accept nominations for the chair of the school board.
I'd nominate Elizabeth Fitzgerald for the chair of the school board.
So, we have a nomination on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those not approved?
Martin can't speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Martin's not yet here. He's on his way. All those in favor? Motion carries. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move to election of the clerk. Do I have nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Bridget Burkhart. Second.
And seeing no other nominations, do all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a quorum. Welcome, Bridget.
Thank you, Bridget.
The next item is to designate a school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board. I would like to recommend that the clerk take on that responsibility if, Bridget, you're amenable to that?
I am amenable to that.
Do I have a motion to approve Bridget as a school member designated to sign contracts on behalf of the board?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Bridget. All right. Our next item on the agenda is to review policy B1 and B2, as well as guidelines on social media communications. Do you want to cover that?
Sure, I can kick this off. So, this is our board policy, as Elizabeth said, B1, and it's really about specific ethical duties of a school board members to avoid conflict of interest, as well as appearances of conflict of interest. So, we always think that this is a good time to just review it. Obviously, if we had new board members, it would be even more important, but nonetheless, we think it's important to review the policies that's specific to this. So, this is the board member conflict of interest. In addition, you also have the board member code of conduct, which is our B2, and as Elizabeth said, we also have guidance that the board, previous board and this board have worked on, on the social media communication guidelines as well. So, I don't, we could re-review this, you know, line by line. Typically, we like to get buy-in on this. I think that understanding what constitutes conflict of interest is important. Social media, communication, so I think these policies are important. I don't know what your pleasure would be, Elizabeth, or board members, on how you want to do this. Again, we put it on there as a kind of a restart of our work.
Yeah, I think this is a good time of year after an election to review these policies because they're relevant to the work of the board. One of the suggestions I might make, David, is that this, each of these three policies, I believe, or at least two of them, are part of the Safe Schools training, which new and existing board members are required to complete. So, there is an online training module that would have these reviewed and an indication of completion. I know, in some cases, that we sign off on policies as the complete board after review and discussion, so I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider formalizing these policy reviews as part of our other monitoring policy reviews and require a sign-off by the board at this timeframe each year, whether we utilize it this particular year or not. I'm wondering if that would be a practice we want to carry over into these specific board policies.
For people who don't know, Safe School is an online repository of training that's required, and so we can create the frequency and how often we want those to be reviewed by our staff, or, in this case, school board members as well. So, we could reset those and ask that that be done, and then have it on as an action item for these to be signed off on by board members on conflict of interest, code of conduct, et cetera. That could be, that would be maybe the most efficient way, however, it's not the most, you know, communicated way to the public around the policies. But, or you could do a variety of both. You could, we could send it back out and ask all board members to review it and essentially sign off that you're in agreement and understand, and then we could have a little bit of some additional talk time, you know, at a board meeting.
Any comments from the rest of the board on that?
I think it would be fine. I mean, I've not really seen a problem with either of these two, at least not in my very short tenure on the board so far, so I'm happy to, you know, review them once a year to make sure that they're keeping up with where we are, but at the moment, I don't really see any major concern with them.
I mean, I think that we're all, anyone who, I mean, any board member often can be put in a situation, again, I think these are the types of things you talk about, where it could be that you're in, you're in a store, in a grocery store, and somebody, and they assume that you're in a position to make, or have the impression that you might be able to help them with their decision. You know, this conflict of interest, you know, helps, I think, board members to be clear about, that is not something that we are in control of, you would need to do this, I'm certainly interested, and I want to make sure, therefore, you haven't taken on that particular situation. Again, that's kind of number one, won't give the impression that you have the authority or represent that particular group. So, again, I think there's some nuances in each one of those sometimes, where we all can feel at some point, that's not in my decision-making. I oversee it. It's the superintendent, superintendent, it's the, you know, the principal, et cetera. So, again, I think some of these are good to have discussions about, but I think probably the route of Safe School and then let the public weigh in on it.
Well, let me offer another comment. The last time these, when this policy was adopted in 2007, and I was the only board member of it, signed off on these at the time, so I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a time sensitivity review of these at a minimum, so there's at least a more current board presence on the policy?
Sure. That makes sense.
Notification?
So, put it up for more of a policy review and updating.
Given the way we look at governance, I feel like, I mean, I'm interested in everybody's feedback, but I feel like that might be a way to make sure, or ensure that it's evaluated, and then through Safe Schools, individual board members can get the training and sign off on it.
I'm amenable to doing that annually. You know, getting it pushed to us through Safe Schools, having to retake, I mean, it's not that long.
Right.
And then us signing this kind of afresh each year.
So, the idea would it be, it would be, it would be reworn, considered, and adopted?
Mm-hmm.
And so, that would kind of be an annual process, maybe? Or unless the board changes?
I'm almost thinking, yeah, that, the timing of it, maybe that should be considered when we review it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure this whole thing would have to be reviewed annually, but I'm just thinking from a shelf life standpoint, maybe every five years or something.
Yeah.
Whatever the configuration of the board.
Yep. Okay. So, we will put this up on Safe School?
It's on it now.
People will push, you'll get a reminder to take it as well.
I only know that because I'm delinquent.
Yeah, yeah. So, take it, and then we'll bring it back for signing and not updating right now. We'll do that through the policy, our policy work. Is that what I'm hearing? So, don't, we won't?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Is the rest of the board amenable to that?
Okay.
And the social media communications is really a guideline, not a policy?
Correct.
Anything else on that, David? Any questions or comments from the public?
Not on anything that's not on the agenda. I would like to comment on the sections you were just discussing, if I could. So, now looking at board members' code of conduct. Item three, totally completely agree with A and B. The board members should try to take individual authority. Conflict of interest, in my experience, be a little careful about it. It is as often used to silence a dissenting opinion as it is to deal with a legitimate conflict of interest, and that's just a caution from my own experience.
All right. So, we'll move on to agenda item seven, comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda.
Leslie?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Leslie Mercy, and I requested to speak with you this evening on behalf of our Rotary Club of South Burlington. I'm the current president. For years, the major priority of our club has been supporting the youth of our community. We've done so through literacy efforts such as establishing the bookmobile for the school library and yearly distribution of dictionaries for every third grader in our elementary schools. We've supported school trips in various clubs and participated in High School Career Development Day. We also provided financial support for the Rick Marcott Central School Playground Project and Middle School Program on Bullying, just to name a few. We're planning our annual fundraiser, May 21st, which is a golf tournament. It's our 20th anniversary, and our club would very much like to use some fundraising proceeds to donate to the school in support of a program for middle school students to, on the opiate problem, to try to put a program into place of some sort that would teach children, help children to stay away from drugs. And that was just something we would like to do, and we spoke with David, and he thought it might be a good idea to come and just present to the board and get your support on being able to do that. So, if you have any questions, we'd love to answer those. And I do have board members, Nancy's here, and Sandy is here as well, so as far as the club is concerned, if you want to speak on this.
Thank you. Questions?
I guess my question would be how far along you are in formulating what the program would look like, or exactly what you were thinking of, and it's just a little, a little more detail would be helpful.
Sure. There are a few opportunities. One is a theatrical program opportunity that, there's a gentleman that is located in Massachusetts that has a group of about nine recovering addicts that perform a theatrical experience. That would be one opportunity we might explore. We might explore working with the Howard Center. I know there are some programs that are currently in the school that they are doing that we might be able to help fund to create even more of an experience for the kids, so it's really just, right now, it's a thought, and it's just raising the funds and then trying to come up and working with all of you in coming up with the best way to spend that money for our children. We just feel like this is just a devastating problem in our community, and if we can do anything to support that for our youth, we want to do that. And we look for you for that kind of help as well. But the main thing is to take these funds and say, okay, we'd like to give them to you and work with you on coming up with a program.
When Bruce Chapman and I met with David, we discussed possibilities, but it would be an age-appropriate program that the school actually develops, something that would be probably presented to the guardians and parents first, so that they would have an idea as to what was going to be presented to the children, so that, once the program is presented to the children, they can go home and discuss it with their guardian or parent. But it would be an age-appropriate thing that the school develops.
Okay. You would definitely approve it. We just need your blessing in donating the funds towards that.
So, I think, you know, first, thanks to the Rotary for the support we've had over the years and the continued support, so I think that's huge. I think, again, their desire and focus on this particular area is certainly an important one. It does affect certainly South Burlington, and it certainly has an effect on our students as well. That said, as they've indicated, we would need to figure out, you know, it's our job to make sure, what are the appropriate, again, given, you know, the age group, given the ideas that we need to make sure that it's age-appropriate and, you know, consistent with the types of stuff that we want to be able to share. So, we would be, we would be working collaboratively together. Again, when we met, you know, we felt that it was a good thing, again, to share publicly, so they're here. Actually, we're going to do it in the last meeting, which we got snowed out, although it didn't snow very much, but, so they're here tonight, and I think they want to get going on informing folks, and we wanted to make sure there was some transparency in the share of the community, you know, to know what the Rotary is proposing and share it with the school board.
Alex Aronel, I didn't know if you looked like you might want to say something. I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I mean, nothing really in particular. I think it's a really good idea. Personally, I think, I think even having maybe student help with that would be really cool. I don't know. I mean, we can talk about that, figuring out the...
You encourage that.
Yeah. I think that's what would help the most, because it's one thing just having adults doing a program and keep talking about, you know, stay away from the drugs.
So, the optimism.
Yeah, so I think we could definitely talk about that. I'd be open to it.
Yeah, I was also going to say, it's a good idea, and just wondering how this would differ from what's already being taught in health classes, because I know when I went attend the middle school, like, it is a subject that we cover in depth in health classes, but...
That's one of you guys would be great resources for us, because we're not in the classroom. We know that things are obviously being discussed, but it would be great to work together and collaborate. Our ideas would be something that would be fun for middle school, I say fun, but something engaging that, you know, they take with them and they can share with parents and that they can talk at home, and I think those are the programs that work the greatest. But that's what you folks do, and that's why we would need your help, so.
I think there's a lot of options, and we, you know, now going forward can talk about it. And again, I think, or now, Alex, I think, you know, whether it's a public service announcement that the students might do, there might be some resources that help put that together. You know, obviously, when you have to talk about it and do something like that, again, the students often get a lot more. So, there's a variety of ideas, I think, from learning and then maybe doing some things that might also spread beyond just the South Burlington borders in the future. Could be really helpful as well. So, again, I want to thank you for the offer and the opportunity.
On behalf of the board, thank you for your past contributions to our schools and students, and we look forward to hearing what comes of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Yes?
Hi. I'm Margaret Ann Cross. I'm chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I know that the city this week voted to send a letter to you asking you to enter into negotiations about a land swap that would benefit the new library that's being designed for City Center, so I just wanted to come by and ask for your support of that effort and to say that we're very excited about what's being planned for City Center, for the library. I think it'll be great for the community, for students, for families, and if we can be helpful at all the board in terms of facilitating or anything to do with the negotiations, we would be very happy to work with you and to be helpful if we can. So, thank you.
Thanks. I think we might have an update on that, on agenda item 11, unless you want to move that up.
Yeah, you probably, I think that was really one of the sole pieces, probably, Elizabeth, and maybe it is right to move that up. We're not too far from that time limit either, so it might be good.
Yeah, maybe just in the interest of time and your presence here, so you don't have to stay if anyone else is there for this particular issue, which was not warned on our agenda, but the city council approved an LOI, a letter of intent, to be sent to the school district on Monday evening, I believe, and this is the first meeting we've had tonight, so we are in receipt of the letter, and I think the plan is to, at this point, to put it on our next agenda for discussion by the board. That unfortunately does not meet the deadline that was given to the school district to respond by April 1st, so, you know, at the end of the day, the earliest opportunity the board can warn this item for discussion and have any feedback to the community or get feedback will be April 4th. So, I guess that's all I can say right now. There was a deadline of April 1st given for a response, and we will not meet that deadline.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that particular topic? Yes?
Having been on the library board many, many years and no longer there, but certainly having gone through all of the workshops and the imaginings, I hope people understand what a fabulous place this will be as part of our proposed City Center. It's going to be not just a library, but a gathering place for all of our citizens, and I hope that the school will see it as another resource right in their backyard and worthy of consideration of this request that you have just received. So, I hope you will look carefully at it. With that in mind, I think you will be delighted with the way this whole new building turns out and how happy our citizens will be to finally have a library that is commensurate with the type of city we want to be and have to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Any other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? All right. We'll move on to amendments to the agenda.
So, I would like to just add to the consent agenda. Eric Stone had submitted a letter requesting an additional second year leave, and so I do believe you have that. I have copies of that. If you don't, I think it's actually by your side or at your place, so I'd like to just place that. Item number 21 on leaves, Eric Stone.
And then, does someone need to make a motion before that?
Yeah, I think that would be up, that would be up to you. If somebody wants to discuss more specifically that, then you would, you need to pull it off under the consent agenda.
I'd make a motion that we take that one out of the consent agenda then and have some further discussion.
As it stands, it's off.
Yes.
So, we can place that one then, 21A or...
That's fine.
Any other amendments, David?
Uh-uh.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item nine, announcement and student rep report.
All right.
You are on, you too.
We have a couple of announcements today. I'm going to start with last week on Thursday, on March 15th, I said, right?
Yeah.
Because a couple of events occurred during that day. First of all, there was a walkout on Thursday, 17-minute-long moment of silence by students to commemorate the lost lives at Parkland, Florida, High School. The Generous Actionality Alliance Club, myself alongside other members, attended Leadership Day at the State House in Montpelier. We had the opportunity to talk to Governor Phil Scott and spoke to a variety of different LGBTQ politicians and representatives, and that was a really wonderful opportunity. We've been there three years in a row. This was my last year, so that was very exciting, and you can read more about it in the seven days. There's a relatively amusing picture of me on the cover. Also, on Thursday, my sister, Vires Kaha Haas, won state championships for Poetry Out Loud. She will be representing Vermont at the Nationals in Washington, DC. You can find her performance on PBS, online. Also, on Thursday, the Peace and Justice Center had held the Ed Everts Activist Award Celebration, and that award was given to SBHS graduate and pasting representative Isaiah Hines, as well as the Muslim Girls Making Change, which is a poetry group, which includes two amazing SBHS students, Kiran Wakhar and Lina Ganawi. So, that all happened on Thursday. SBHS students, part of the Science Olympiad, won Vermont State Championships on March 10th and will soon attend Nationals in Colorado. Also, the Visual and Performing Arts Gala happened on March 11th. Many talented students performed at the gala and showed their artwork. There was a snow day last week on Wednesday. There was also SBHS Talent Night took place. It was funded by Key Club on Thursday and Saturday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And then the first day of spring sports was on Monday. It was the class of 2019 in first place, the class of 2018 in second, class of 2020 in third, and class of 2021 in fourth. I don't know if, should I say like seniors?
So, did you not want to say that because the seniors didn't?
Oh, no, we just...
I could have said it.
Yeah.
I was waiting for you to say it.
Second's not bad. No, we just have a lot of announcements, so we just wanted to...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'll be quiet.
A couple future updates. TIE Japan visitors will be coming to our high school and community from March 22nd to April 2nd, and then a couple celebrations in our schools are coming up a lot this week. Chamberlain, last night, actually had its sixth annual invention convention, where third to fifth graders bring home creative inventions that they have with their families and present it, and it's actually pretty cool. I got a chance to see some of them. They're really creative. Orchard School this Friday, the 23rd, has their annual school skate night at Karen's Arena, which includes a collection of canned goods from Vermont Food Bank. Rick Marcott Central School this also Friday has its annual spring fair, which is a school community event with games, food, and fun, and I remember being in elementary school. That was always my favorite night. The middle school math counts team swept the first five places at the state championship with, hopefully I don't pronounce this wrong, Serram Sethuraman? There's a bunch of names. Sax Sham, man, I'm, the last name is probably not going to work. Sangman Lee, Kenny, and Kenny Chamberlain, all qualified for the national championship in Washington, DC, and Simon Cafiero as the first alternative, and Anshuda Birum also finished in the top 10, so that's really impressive. Also, this Friday, SBHS is hosting their one-act performance in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. And this Saturday, the 24th, is the Vermont State Science and Math Fair at Norwich University. And then this Sunday, the 25th, is the SBHS Band Concert, which will be held at 2:00 PM. And then there's also, just a reminder about kindergarten registration, Chamberlain School is April 9th and 10th, Central School is April 11th and 12th, and Orchard is 17th and 18th. And then also, Alex and I just wanted to quickly update Mr. Young, Mr. Child, and us two met this earlier today, to talk about, we thought it'd be a good idea to have a public hearing or a dialogue, we're not sure exactly yet, about public safety and our school's security in the near future, and so Alex and I just wanted to kind of bring that up and say how we personally think it's important to have a lot of student input on that and student voice in that dialogue, because I think that'll be reassuring to the community, and I think it's really important to have that now. So, yeah.
Thank you. To a couple, just a couple other quick things. I know that there was a Young at Heart lunch that went on. Our freshman students went over and had lunch at the city hall with some of the seniors and had great dialogue, and it was a pretty positive event. The other thing by, school board members by your place is a request, if you would like, to participate in what we're calling, participate in Beyond Diversity Training. It's a two-day over the summer. Again, the group, we've got a pretty, you know, dispersment of folks, staff, from the high school, middle school, the elementary schools, and so this is an invitation to a school board member, a couple school board members, if you'd like to participate. It would be onsite, you're not going anywhere, but it is a two-day event, and we would encourage and love to have a couple board members be part of that. So, if you're interested, you know, please let myself or Delaina know that you're interested in doing that, and we'll get you set up.
Yeah, and briefly for the rest of the board, the preliminary conversation between David and I and our student reps is really to frame an agenda leveraging some expertise outside the district that would allow a conversation in a structured way that's both informational but also solicits feedback around everything from the facilities improvements to process and operations to training and development as it relates to safety and security, and it's not limited to, you know, some of the extraordinary events that we've heard about most recently, but also just preparedness for any type of safety or security issue that schools might face. We're looking forward to working more on that. All right. Unless there's anything else, we'll move on to agenda item 10, legislative update.
So... So By Your Place, I believe, is the information specific to, actually it was in your packet, I believe, on the tobacco information from Alex. And so we previously had this, it has come up. We did not get it on the agenda, we didn't have the information. Alex has provided us the information, and I think it's available here for discussion. There's no action warned, but it's a discussion topic.
Alex, do you want to go ahead and give an overview?
Sure, I'd like to give an overview of it. Currently, the legislature is considering, considering, or has, in one form or another, raising the age at which you can buy cigarettes and vaping or any other tobacco product from eighteen to twenty-one. Right now, the bill itself is not going very far, and it doesn't appear at this time that it's catching a whole lot of momentum. It was my thought that if public bodies such as school boards would get behind this bill and perhaps adopt a resolution in favor of it, some of the legislators who were on the fence or not currently supportive of it could change their minds, and perhaps this could be enacted into law. And I think that the first question that people might ask is, you know, why would a school board take an interest in this? You know, we're a campus, a smoke-free campus. You're not allowed to even have them on campus. So why would we be involved? And that, I think, is answered by some of the articles that I sent out in the board packet. One explaining that a lot of kids who, or people who do become smokers, do so before they become eighteen. And this is also done with a great deal of work and help from the tobacco industries, which goes pretty, to a pretty far extent, to promote smoking as whatever, something that kids would want to try. But I think the most important one is the one page that, I was actually given this by Representative George Till. And if it's all right with you, I'd like to just read it in its entirely, entirety. It's only one page. Would that be all right? Okay, thank you. Anyhow, this, let me just read it. Among children and adolescents, low academic achievement is associated with smoking. Several studies have found that middle and high school students who smoked had lower grades than those who did not smoke. In one study, the association appeared to be bidirectional, with poor grades preceding the onset of smoking and smoking preceding poor grades. Youth who experience difficulties at school may feel lost connected to their school, excuse me, may feel less connected to their school than do their higher achieving peers. Peers putting them at greater risk for smoking. Connectedness with school, example, commitment to school, good relationships with teachers and feeling of belonging in school, has been consistently associated with reduced risk of smoking in the literature, and there are a lot of footnotes in this. Among young adults, college students have a lower prevalence of smoking than their peers who do not attend college. For example, in the 2003 Tobacco Use Supplement to the Current Population Survey, current smoking prevalence among eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds who were enrolled in college had, or had college degrees, was fourteen percent, compared with thirty percent among those who did attend college. In addition, those who did not go to college initiated smoking at younger ages and were less likely to have made quit attempts. According to, let's see, the 2010 Monitoring the Future Study, only 3.9% of college students reported smoking one-half pack or more of cigarettes per day, compared with fifteen percent of their peers in college. This disparity in smoking rates between college students and those not in college appears to precede actual college attendance. In other words, that means when they're in high school. In their report, Johnson and colleagues also found that the prevalence of smoking one-half pack of cigarettes or more per day was three times as high among high school seniors who are not planning to attend college as it was among seniors planning to attend college. And then it shows a table demonstrates a strong relationship between the educational attainment and smoking, with fifty percent of school dropouts aged sixteen to nineteen years estimated to be current smokers versus an estimated of eighteen point six percent for those who remained in school. And the last paragraph of this page talks quite a bit about college, which is a little bit beyond the scope of a public school board, but we are responsible for getting kids ready for college. So back to the first paragraph, I think it explains why I think that a school board should get involved in taking a position on this. And that is basically because smoking is interfering with our ends. Our students are becoming, in my view, less, less prepared for success once they graduate, and perhaps less prepared or less successful in school. And one thing that I have not mentioned is that with the current age being eighteen, a lot of our high school seniors are eighteen and able to buy them legally and certainly able to share them with anyone underage if they so choose. And I'd also like to say, I emailed the school resource officer on the subject and asked him if he'd like to take any involvement. He, we didn't get to that point, but he did say he was supportive of the bill. Perhaps in the future, I'd like to invite him to make a more detailed statement on that.
And do you know what the status is of S-88?
S-88 was defeated last year.
Is there a House version of the bill?
There is.
What's the number on that?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Did we get that House version in here?
No.
I'm sorry? Okay. So that's what you're asking action on, is the House bill?
Yes. Well, actually, to be, to be less specific, I'm not asking for action on any particular thing, but I think, I think we should take a position on it.
So I agree, I think it would help. Having the school board weigh in, just a couple comments. First of all, we should certainly focus on e-cigarettes, because the amount of actual cigarettes that are being smoked by the youth has gone down significantly. The amount of youth who are using e-cigarettes, and I don't have the time period, but it's gone up by some ridiculous percentage, something like seven hundred percent in the last few years. So that should be the focus, number one. The second is, actually just today, one of the things that maybe the chair is gonna appreciate that I voted for, unlike some of the other things I voted for. We, there was a revenue bill that significantly increased the taxes on e-cigarettes and such products. And it has been shown that the cost of cigarettes is one thing that helps suppress the use by youth particularly. So that actually moves in the right direction. The third thing I'd say is, if we sent them a resolution now, it would be completely lost in the end of the biennium shuffle. And we should plan on having that as one of our priorities, that we should put together a letter like we've done before at the beginning of the biennium, once we know who to send it to, you know, to see the representatives. That includes this as one of the items. But it just, it just wouldn't accomplish anything at this point, just because of, it's already been crossover and those, and I can watch for it. George Till actually got up today, Representative Till, to applaud this increase in the, in the tax and how that's a very important step. I agree with you, though, it's a matter of timing, and I think it's a matter of what we're gonna focus on. But I think that something along this bill that was put in will probably be put in again, but perhaps we can get some movement behind it. Perhaps we'll have some new, more open senators, because it would, it would pass the House. I think that, at least in this session, it would have passed the House, but the Senate took it up first, and it was, it never made it to the floor. That would be my two cents worth on this one.
And David or Stuart, do we know, our youth risk survey does not query right now for, for e-cigarettes?
So we don't have the results of the last survey yet that was done last spring? We're still waiting. And I do believe there were questions for the first time related to that.
Just the first time, okay.
Prior to that, there was no.
So we don't have the data, but.
Right.
And then did, do you recall that our, our own self-reporting data showed that?
We're one of the lowest in the states in terms of cigarettes.
And that it had gone down as well, as Martin indicated?
It had gone down from the previous.
Smoking, that is.
Smoking, just talking about tobacco. Yes, because we don't have the data.
But that's consistent with what Martin said.
I guess one of the questions I would have Alex is, you know, certainly as an individual board, we can make a decision, but I wonder if, is there any VSBA position on this?
I don't think so, but it's certainly something I'd be willing to take. Or we can, that, that actually would be the next step, that if we want to take, have an action item, it is to propose a resolution. First, double-check that there isn't one already, and I don't recall that there is. But the, the VSBA will be looking for resolutions that it will bring before the whole body, you know, the whole VSBA in October. And we should give them language on this resolution, and it'll be sometime in the July timeframe that they'll be accepting those. We'll get communications from them, and we can certainly submit that. So watch your emails for the VSBA emails. Yeah. Yeah, and I'd be happy to press for that as well.
Any other board comments or questions?
Strongly supportive.
Yeah, and it's a great thing to do. I mean, my questions, for Martin's answer them, you know, just in terms of where we are in this legislative session.
I think it's a great idea.
Is there general agreement that maybe the next step would be a timeframe that would get a resolution to VSBA at the annual meeting?
That sounds good to me.
It is July timeframe that they accept them, because they have a resolution committee to look at what they're gonna press.
So maybe this would be late June, a late-June meeting? Any comments from the public regarding this issue? Okay. Thanks, Alex. I would just encourage you to stay on top of any of the data that might support a resolution as well.
I will, and thank you all very much for the time.
Did you want to hear anything else about? That's why I drove here so fast.
Yeah, well, that was only one component of, of legislative update.
There's probably other items.
You're not off the hook, yes.
So Martin, is there anything, I, we did get, David and I got a note that Maida was going to try to attend the meeting to speak to.
They were still having, they send their regrets, all three, because they were still going to have the chair meeting, and we didn't get out of here until, out of there until whatever time it was, six-twenty. So, so we won't be seeing them. A couple things, first of all.
Can I just, can I just give you, Maida's feedback was she has attached a link to a bill from the House Government Operations, which she thinks might be of interest for board members. It's been sent to the Senate for their work, and this is in reference to Open Meeting Laws and Public Records Act.
Right, there's a key component of it, that when this bill gets passed, I would have violated it, but it doesn't go retroactively, that you can't have serial conversations, meaning that I can't talk to you to get your agreement on something and then talk to Bridgette and then talk to Alex. You can't do that once this bill gets passed. Well, we'll see what comes out of the Senate. That's the one biggest issue with.
We're gonna get anything done.
We're gonna have to get it done all in front of Wendell, which is what he wants.
So is that, should, should that bill be circulated then, at this point, to the House, to the board, or, because it sounds like it's with the Senate at this point?
Yeah, I mean, we could weigh into it on the Senate, but I don't know that there's things to. Yeah, we should be aware of it.
Okay.
I didn't think anything was objectionable.
We'll take the email from Maida, or David, if I could ask you, that that be circulated to the board?
No, we don't. So, there are a couple votes today that I may not have voted the way the chair wanted me to, but it wasn't a board position. But before I get there, it was delightful to see Alex there. Next time, make sure you give me a heads up that you're gonna be there, so I don't miss the devotional, so I miss what you're gonna say on the floor.
I apologize.
But, no, no, it was, it was just, it made my day to see you, and always a pleasure to see you. And today, we had Amelia Charbonneau, who was a sophomore, who testified in front of the Education Committee promoting my collective bargaining bill and mostly opposed to banning strikes, which also mean banning imposition, but she's against those things. So that, that was nice. I missed her, because I was, they're right next door, but we were in committee, and I will start with this and then get to the ones you're angry about. So, so we're doing, to the issue of school safety, there are several initiatives going on at the State House. This afternoon, there was a joint meeting between the Education Committee from the Senate and the House, and there were a whole bunch of students that testified. Unfortunately, I was unable to go to that as well, but I heard, you know, there were eighth graders. I don't know if anybody was there from South Burlington. I'm not sure if you would know, David. But it was very moving and a very poignant testimony. We actually had four high school students in last week testifying in the Judiciary Committee, and after two weeks of testimony today, we passed out, or a week and a half of testimony, we passed out a gun law that would establish expanded background checks that would raise the age to twenty-one as an age limit for purchase of firearms, with, with some exceptions. Would ban bump stocks and ban high-capacity ammunition loading devices like magazines and clips. So that, that moved out of the Judiciary Committee, will be taken up on the House floor on Friday. So, so that's what's going on in the Judiciary Committee as far as trying to address keeping firearms out of the hands of individuals who may intend harm with them, and also reducing the lethality of firearms. That goes to the bump stocks and the high-volume magazines. So, so there's also two other bills dealing with gun laws. One has to do with, is in the Senate, coming back over to the House, having to do with removing firearms from domestic violence situations. The other, more applicable to school safety, is something called an Extreme Risk Protection Order Bill. And that's where, even before somebody has necessarily committed a crime, if there's a showing that they are at an extreme risk of causing harm to themselves or others with firearms, that the firearms can be removed. That's something that has been going back and forth between the Senate and the House, but we're gonna be pretty close to having something. So there's a lot of stuff going on there. I don't know precisely what bills might come out of the Education Committees. I don't think they've gotten to specifics yet. I do understand that the governor requested five million dollars to assist schools with safety upgrades. I know that the House Capitol Bill, which is gonna be on the House floor tomorrow, has some amount of money. I don't know if it's the full five million dollars. I will learn tomorrow, if I'm paying attention on the floor, which I will try. So that's, that's kind of the school safety stuff. And I, also, there is, I don't know if you folks are gonna be involved in it, but there is a march this, this Saturday in Montpelier. If you guys are gonna go there, look for me, I'm gonna definitely be going as well. It's one that's being organized nationally by, by students. So that's that. We can just keep going, or do you want to hear about school education funding and, and special ed? So, yes, we.
I have particular interest in H-911, please.
Yes, H-911. It passed, but I don't know what the vote was, because as soon as I voted, I left so I could get here. So I could get here in time to vote for you as board chair and you as clerk. I would have voted for both of you if I had been here. I just want to make that very clear. So the, the H-911, and I'm sorry, in my rush to leave, I didn't bring all the documents I was gonna use to explain it. It, I, this will be very high level, and we can get into details, if you want, at a later time. Although, before it gets to the end game and is signed by the governor, I anticipate significant changes, because there was some significant pushback and consternation by quite a few people with respect to that bill. And I do anticipate, and already some messaging coming from the administration as far as cost containment and the like. So what we have now is not necessarily, and is very unlikely, what we're gonna have at the end. But what, in the high level, it, and here's some of the things that I like about it. It diversifies the revenue stream by reducing the reliance on property tax and shifting some of the ed funding to a, an income tax, an income tax surcharge. It's a progressive tax, it's point one percent up to a certain point. I'm not gonna try to remember exactly. to try to remember exactly, probably John knows, point five up to another level, then one percent surcharge at the higher levels. So that's going to raise money that will be earmarked, and that will be just for the ed fund. It won't, one of the things that it gets rid of is the general fund transfer. It also takes some spending out of the ed fund and puts them into the general fund, spending that isn't directly related to K through twelve, such as the, what's it called, the community high school of, yeah, of Vermont, in corrections, some other costs as well, and I can't name all of them off the top of my head. So that's another thing that it does. The way that the property tax works, the residential, well, let me back up for, for a moment. So, a couple of other things, as far as the ed fund will be funded by the surcharge, it's going to be funded by all of the sales and use tax, all of it's going to go into the ed fund, right now it's split up, and a certain amount of the room taxes at hotels will also be earmarked, along with lottery proceeds. So, all that money will go in, and from that, they'll divide it by however many equalized pupils there are in, in the state to come up with, I think that's the base spending rate, but there's a formula, and I can share it with you at some point, I actually, I wrote it down, that comes up with how much the tax rate's going to be. If you bear with me, I will tell you exactly what it is. See, that's my, nice, is that nice how I, see, I did math.
Very good.
I did math when I was on the floor. So it's, it's per pupil spending, minus the base rate, divided by the yield, is going to be the tax rate.
The whole thing, both, this minus this, all divided by the yield?
The per pupil spending minus base rate.
Mm-hmm.
That's, whatever that comes out to, is then divided by the yield.
Okay, just to clarify, Martin, the base rate and the yield are established by the state?
Correct.
So that leaves one variable that's, that's managed at the local level in that equation.
That is correct. So the concept is that, I'm going to get this wrong, almost certainly, so you'll.
Turn that sideways, so it's a little bigger.
Oh, sorry.
All right. You needed to put brackets around this.
I really wish I wasn't rushed to get here, because I did have a nice stack of information that really explains as well. The concept that, that, I believe it is the yield, they're going to set at an amount, and it's going to go down over the next couple of years. What that means, and, and I will leave this to the financial people on this board, which is not me, what this means is that for each dollar spending that a district has over the, the base rate, there's going to be an increase, a higher increase of what your tax rate's going to be. The concept is that that's what is going to incentivize school boards to try to keep their spending down, because the high-spending schools are going to be paying a much higher resident tax rate than the lower-spending schools. So, I like the concept. The concept that it could have been is mandates as far as what you're going to do, that you're going to have a certain ratio, or any number of other mandates that they might send to us, and instead, it's leaving to the local boards the decisions. You figure out how to contain your costs, but if you don't, it's, it's going to cost your taxpayers, you know, an increasing rate.
So again, not to interrupt, and as tempted as I am to ask you math questions.
That would be fun, wouldn't it?
Does this base rate account for student acuity, as well as capital improvements, and does it include the transfer to the retirement pension fund for the teachers?
I think that that you would have to look at, not the base rate, but the per pupil spending rate. That's where all that.
So all of that will be accounted for in per pupil spending, but it won't be accounted when a base rate is set?
The base rate, as I understand it, help me out, John, if you're paying.
Yeah, you're going to ask me?
Yeah, I was going to ask you. The, the base rate, and I will get back to you when I find out this is wrong, is, is the amount of money that they've taken in, no, I'm going to screw this up, I should just say I, I'm not positive.
Well, as you well know, those are variables that can drive per pupil spending that really don't reflect.
Correct. And, and that, that, what you're saying is a somewhat different question than the funding formula. You know, what, what should be accounted in your per pupil spending is definitely, there are bills that are out there, I don't know where they are in the Ed Committee right now, because they focused on the special education bill and on this funding bill. It seems to have the exclusion of really also excellent bills, such as collective bargaining reform, which they didn't consider. So any of that, but, but the idea, going back to a higher level, because obviously I can't get into the details with any ability, is that it's, it's, it has these features that it leaves the cost containment decisions to the local school boards, and that's one of the things that I, I do like. I may have gotten some of the details wrong, and exactly how that happens, and, and I'm happy to, to get those details to you. So, it, it takes spending out of the ed fund that is not associated with K through twelve. On the other hand, it puts some spending in that hasn't been traditionally in the ed fund. Actually, they put that in last year, and the amount of money for current teachers' pension obligations does not include the deficit. It is for the teachers we have now, and how much we are supposed to be putting in there.
The normal cost.
What's that?
The normal cost.
The normal costs is, yeah, so, and, and they're going to, the, the thing that's changing in this bill is now, it is going to be going into per pupil spending, is my understanding. The good thing for South Burlington at this point is that the way they're going to figure this out is headcount, not salary, which would be worse for us. We're actually making out somewhat on this, because we have the highest salary, but, but it's apparently, the treasurer is the one who will be figuring that out, and it's too complicated to, to try to figure it out based on salaries, is what I've been told. So.
Either way, there's a deficit.
What's that?
Which may be why there's a deficit.
No, there's.
If it involves actual money.
No, no, it's actually, it's a deficit because they didn't put enough money in during the aughts, during a couple administrations ago. They underfunded it, yes.
But if, if it's being calculated by headcount, but it's paid out in actual dollars, I'm being a little facetious, but not so much.
No, just, just what we, well, just what we have to, the portion of the seven point eight million dollars that last year, or this current year, was just kind of taken off the top of the ed fund, meaning that there was that much less that we, you know, everybody had to cover in the property tax. Now it's going to be divvied up, and the concept behind that is, this is a way to get at ratios without necessarily saying how many teachers you had, you have, because the more teachers you have, the more you're going to have to pay towards that pension.
You know, the one thing I, I mean, again, I, it's not really fair, because you're, you're just coming out, so I, I respect that you're, you're here, you know, running quickly from the meeting. You know, I think, you know, the per pupil spending, when we look at that calculation as we currently have, we have, you know, ed spending, subtracting our, our revenue sources, but all in, in the expenditure line, has always been those extraneous components of, of facilities and upkeep and all those other pieces, and it hasn't yielded, you know, an apples-to-apples comparison.
Right.
And I don't, at least I don't hear it currently, that there's any exclusion from that, so as we continue to have needs in those, outside of the actual delivery of education, you know, like facilities, it's going to be calculated into that total dollar, because it's per pupil, subtracting the base rate, and it seems to be disproportionate, as, as a, as a, at least a first review based on that.
As far as facility.
Well, again, I just think.
So that's the cost you're putting into, you're counting in per pupil. I, I know of one bill that, if I'm not mistaken, I, I co-sponsored it, where we're trying to not have those costs.
Included in the.
Included in that.
In that per pupil spending amount.
Right, and I just frankly don't know if that, that's, if that's gone anywhere. You know, I, I'm going to, I can follow up, certainly, but, but the Ed Committee has been taken up by these other things, and I've pressed them on various things, like the collective bargaining reform.
And currently, Martin, this, this is a bill that's would be, would be proposed for the following year, or would it be, it's trying to actually go into effect?
There is a bill, but whether anything's happening on it, it probably.
Does nine eleven impact FY nineteen budgets?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. And that was the other, that was my biggest issue with it. You know, bottom line, I did vote for this, because I weighed the, the positives against the, the negatives. I found, the more I looked at the pension issue, I'm okay with that, because I, I think that that should be picked up by the, the districts that are making the decisions.
Of course it should.
On, on how many teachers they have and such. I, yes, I do have a problem that we don't get to negotiate that benefit, negotiate what the, or decide what the discount rate is, decide, decide what the benefit itself is, and we don't have that, certainly, and that, that is a downside, and that's the continuing problem I have with this. As far as, as it going into effect this year, that, that troubles me the most, but the, the thing is that there are individuals that on net will be paying more. They will, they will be saving on their property tax, but then on the income tax, they probably will be paying more. The, the thing is that the income tax component of this wouldn't change, no matter what our budget is. I mean, it's one, it's point one, point five, or one percent. You know, if, that doesn't shift regarding the budget, it's just the property tax. Of course, somebody who is paying higher net would probably say, well, I want you to have an even lower budget to have an even lower property tax, so that I'm not paying on net more. The, the other thing, you know, it's, it is a progressive tax, though, and I think that, that is important. There's another, there are other fundamental problems with this, you know, there's a problem that, that one percent tax, point five and one divorces that money from what the budget is, and we don't like that. I mean, we want people to have so-called skin in the game, and, and the budget should affect how much they're paying. That's, that's why I like that there is still a significant property tax component of it. I think what it means, if this thing goes through, again, this isn't going to be what we see at the end of the sausage grinder, I mean, there's no way. But right now, at least, it would be fourteen cents, I think it's fourteen cents, I don't, that's an email I got from John, and I couldn't remember my password to log on to find the email. So, but, but there's a pretty decent decrease in that property tax. Yeah, there is the increase in the income tax component as well, and that, that's all just the ed funding part. There's a other part of, of the income tax and taxes generally, which there's a break, there's a decrease on, on the income tax component that doesn't go to the ed fund. I will not try to get into those details, though. I frankly am shocked that I remembered that much.
It's extremely complicated, though, from what I've been able to see.
Yes, yes. And I've been focused on, on firearms for the past eight days, but, you know. So that's that bill.
I mean, just to remind the board, we did send a letter, as a board, to the House Ways and Means Committee opposing any impact on FY nineteen budgets. There's really a credibility issue with our taxpayers, who just approved the budget. That opposition that we sent out went out about ten days or so before the public was voting on our budget, and the bill that's been passed will impact FY nineteen at this point.
So, a couple of points. It does not, it does not impact the budget. It doesn't impact the budget, it is shifting some of the revenue that is.
It impacts taxpayers.
Going to be paying for that. It does impact taxpayers, that, that part is, yeah, that is correct, but it doesn't impact the budget. And, and the letter that we did send was with reference to a far more dramatic change that this one dialed back significantly. So that, that letter was arguing against a particular bill that, that was changed pretty dramatically by the time it hit the floor.
And I would disagree, it wasn't arguing the magnitude of the change, it was arguing any change to budgets that were in front of community members at this moment, but that's my opinion. I'm, I'm also looking at the diversification of the revenue stream. We've talked about more risk and volatility in that revenue stream.
That, that's made up for by the fact that there's a lot more coming in from what the tax people tell me is the least volatile, which is interesting, I didn't think this was true, the, the sales and use tax being a hundred percent put into, into the ed fund.
And then the other piece is another variable, being the teacher's retirement pension, which will be outside the scope of local control, that gets added to the other variables that are now outside local control.
And the response to that, though I, I already kind of went over the parts that I agree are not within local control, is that there is local control to, as far as the number of teachers that you have, and there was the possibility that it would also relate to the amount of money that you're paying the teachers. I'm told that that's not going to be a variable, at least at this time. You know, sometimes I have to hold my nose, and this was one of them, but there were too many good things that I wanted to see advanced, at least to the next stage of this process, and there's certainly opportunity to look more closely at the bill that has come out and to weigh in with the Senate. That absolutely is something that we can do.
Steve?
I can't remember the exact text of our ballot motion. Is anything in this bill going to have to cause us to go back to the voters? You said the dollar amount of the budget won't change, but are any of the, is there one or other, it's not just the budget that's in the ballot measure, but what else do we?
Ed spending pre-equalized pupil.
Okay, that won't change.
Ed spending pre-equalized pupil, I think that's got to change with this, but the state's making up the rules, so they're going to obviously make up the changes.
But that's not atypical, that's not atypical, then, what, that can happen at the end of a session, where the, the yield has often changed, which changes, you know, slightly tax rate in, in.
So there's precedent for this, and we don't have to go through this exercise for the.
We always have said that it's contingent upon, you know, you know, legislative final action, and we were more clear in the end that it was really specific more to the yield than anything else, that, I mean, we were kind of clear about that possibility.
Yeah, you know, it's, again, the budget's the same, some of the figures that we were able to give, which we always hedge in, in the budget book, certainly. There's a transparency issue, it's not a school board transparency issue. I don't know if there's understanding of that, I mean, it is, it is the legislature that has a tendency to come in and do this kind of thing, like they did last year with the, with the health insurance, and, and it does put us in a bad position, I do understand that.
Yeah, it's just so darn hard, you know, administratively, not board-wise, I'll speak on, when we look at, you know, the desire to go, to create strategic planning, when we look to have, you know, organizational structure, when we look at, you know, how can we have the capacity, whether we need to increase or decrease on the, on the needs, you know, one of the big components is, you know, budgetary information, and it's so hard when things, ever since I've been in education, every, I'm going to say, probably every two years, and in some cases, every year, we've had a funding formula kind of, you know, from slight change to major change, and we've never been able to ascertain, you know, that, that directional kind of perspective. For the first time, I, I mean, it began that, you know, at least we were able to adapt to some of the, the metrics that were in the budget, and whether it's equalized pupils or overall spending or facility upgrade, it seemed like we were more able to isolate, and I'm just worried about the future, and it's also currently not, not extremely easy to communicate the, the budget drivers that are currently in play to our, you know, when I traveled over to the, you know, the senior lunch, it's like, you've got to slow down, it can. It gets complicated. And I'm worried about yet that happening again. So.
Let me add another part that I was on the negative side of the scale, is that this doesn't do really anything to clarify things. It's still, it's still super complicated. And that was one of the things they set out to try to do, and, and they didn't accomplish that. And also, yes, and, and I, I do express this. There are various reasons. One, cast their vote as they do. But I, I shared the message as strong as I could with the various people of, of these particular frustrations, and not just on this bill, but, but for the past several months, as far as the timing and the changes. And it's been, the last four or five years at least, it, curveballs keep on coming at us. Right? So.
Well, the, the trend on the yield, because most districts and SUs came in lower than what was originally anticipated, was that there was likely going to be a lower tax rate than what we communicated to the community in our budget worksheets. So that would have happened likely regardless. But I look at this nine eleven bill, and I don't think it's good policy. I respect you, Martin, but I'm disappointed in your vote. I'm disappointed personally, as a single board member and a community member, in each of our South Burlington representatives' votes on this particular bill. I think it did not accomplish the goal of simplifying or making transparent to our community members' education funding. I think it's introduced variables where there's no offsetting mechanism vis-à-vis capital improvements, vis-à-vis special ed, vis-à-vis the teacher's retirement pension fund, which has a significant deficit right now, that transferring the normal funding of it is not going to address the deficit. That's going to come back to South Burlington and state taxpayers to accommodate that. And I'm, I'm not opposed to delivering on promises that have been made to our public employees, but that's an area that, that needs significant review. And I look at the FY nineteen budget impact. This administration and this board worked really, really hard to be as transparent as we possibly could with the community on this budget, and it passed. And we're going to be spending time now educating our community on what changed, not only with this particular budget, but as we go into future budget approval processes. And there are still some variables that were, we don't know how, what the impact is going to be yet on some of the Ed bills that you're referencing. So that's, that's my concern, and we've got some work ahead.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I disagree with a lot of what you just said as well. I mean, this sets us in the right direction in diversifying the revenues for, for this. There's been people calling, in fact, the previous chair wanted to move the whole thing to income tax. I don't agree with that. But it does diversify the revenue stream. It takes things out of the general fund that, that the Ed fund shouldn't be paying for. It, it sets something up so that the cost containment decisions are being made at the local level rather than being mandated at the state. Yeah, sure, there are some things not to like. The primary one in my view, again, is it going into effect right away. But however, on that one, most of the taxpayers in, who voted on our budget, one way or another, will be seeing the savings. You know, so, you know, that's a little hollow because there are going to be people who will be paying more. But it is a progressive tax, so the people who are paying more are the people who are going to be in a better position and more capable to do so. So I think it's a step in the right direction. I don't think it's everything that I would want. It does raise questions. I am frustrated that it's a constant thing that seems to be shifting under our feet as for the administration and the board. So we'll see how it lands by the end of May.
Any other board comments or questions on nine eleven? Public comments? Wendell?
One concern I have, and this is based on the last best projections I saw out of it, and all the numbers weren't put out, but that it may be disingenuous that it is shifting some of the burden towards income tax because although it takes that set off right off, at least not long ago, as soon as you went above the threshold of spending, which essentially everyone does, that shift towards the income tax, excuse me, yeah, towards the income tax began to evaporate very rapidly. And for a great many school districts, it was going to hit the property tax harder than it has. Now, and I'll tell you where that analysis came from, Public Assets Institute. So I am concerned about the way this has been sold, and I would rather see it sold honestly if it's going to happen than to hoodwink people that they're going to somehow get a break on their property taxes because I'm not at all sure at this point that a great many people are.
Well, it is no, but that is another, there's another downside to this is that local school boards are going to have to not take this as there being more property tax capacity. That if we've dropped twelve cents, that doesn't mean on the property tax and shifted to the income tax doesn't mean that we have twelve cents to play with in future budgets. So if that happens, you're right, then, then it hasn't done what we want. But the way that the property tax, residential property taxes to be calculated, you gotta be careful about how much more you're putting in the budget and how much higher above the base spending rate you are because you're going to be paying a penalty. Not, you don't have to get to a threshold. It's like every dollar further up.
Well, above the base.
You're, you're going to be paying more of a penalty.
The base has not risen, is that correct?
The ba, I don't, no, it's not. I don't recall. I'm not gonna try to remember.
Last time I knew it hadn't. And almost everyone is now spending well above the base with a very few exceptions. And as soon as you moved away from that base, this claim that it was putting your spending more onto an income tax basis was very high a couple of weeks ago, anyway. And I don't know the final push and turns in the last two weeks. I haven't, outside.
You know, what's surprising to me, and I don't, I don't know if there's been collection, but from my perspective, what we've seen, you know, seven years ago, we had the income threshold of, it was below ninety. We now are at an income threshold of anyone is income sensitized below one forty-six, I believe. One forty-seven. And so while, you know, we talk about our current system as a property tax system, it has been very income sensitized, and more people have been sensitized on income. And now essentially what I'm, again, I don't, I don't understand all of the moving parts, but it sounds like it's going to now shift it back to have more of, of an impact on in, income. So those folks that have been income sensitized below, let's say, one forty-seven, how is that going to look to a population that have been paying or sensitized on income?
Well, income sensitivity is still there. That's one of the things that they retained that kept it more complicated than we would like to have seen it. So, I mean, it's, it's tough to, you, you have so many different districts and so many different situations and high spending and why they're high spending and such, all going into this. To, to try to arrive at some sort of compromise position that the Ways and Means and Ed Committees came out with, you know, they've, Ways and Means has pretty much spent almost all of this session trying to come up with something with eleven very smart financial people, and then eleven people on the Ed Committee, also very smart, dealt with this for a very long time. And, and I do also respect the committee process in that we had very good people working on this. So, but I do see some of the downsides, still, I think, overall. There was one other bill, but I'm not even gonna try to explain that one to you. You'll, you'll have to wait for Joanne Godek, yeah, Joanne Godek to explain it. I think the biggest issue is that it's, it's being piloted of not here for the next, I don't remember how many years. That, that whole.
As a census space, right? Is that, is that what we, it was, used to be a block grant, which is what we used to have. Shifting it back that way is what we kind of understand currently, at least.
I've already gotten myself in enough trouble tonight. I'm not gonna try to explain that one.
Fair. We have to stop digging at this point.
Yeah, stop digging at this point, right.
Anything else on legislative update?
This, you know, nice, harsh, good critique, nothing like all the nice critiques I've been getting from my friends in the gun rights groups over the last seven days. This was pretty mild. I won't re, I can't repeat in public some of the things I was called.
Oh, we read them online.
Okay, and if there's nothing else on legislative update?
Had to consult the Urban Dictionary.
We're getting a little behind on the agenda, so we'll shift to city-school collaboration?
I'm using an alias, so you don't know who I am.
Which one is?
I think we covered the receipt of the LOI, and then I believe David and I have a meeting with Kevin Dorn and Helen scheduled for Friday, correct?
Correct. See, this is the way I look at it.
Are we meeting with them still, or it seems like that's monthly? Okay.
But honestly, we just barely had, we had our first meeting maybe two weeks ago for the prior four or five months.
There were scheduling problems essentially on their end that, that made it difficult for them to meet with us. So we'll be back at it hopefully and on schedule.
All right, we'll move to election results.
So that, that's in your packet, and also you have some voter information overview. This is consistent with what we started back in two thousand nine. Actually, I think Martin started that out, and we've continued to just build on the packet in hopes that it provides information in how we can continue to reach out and make connections with our community. And so I don't necessarily, again, we've given it two thousand fifteen to eighteen, looking at it in a comparison way. Voter participation by district, the actual voting results by district, yes and no votes. And then we've done the bond vote, and then looked at kind of the historical trend from two thousand and nine to eighteen with kind of how those numbers have gone. So I don't know. I, again, I think we may want to spend some more time in the future on this. We also did a lot in the past with Vince Bolduc's work with his St. Mike's students back in the day around exit poll information. And I don't know. I always feel like there's some strategies that we could put in play around getting communication and creating interest, and maybe that's somewhat connected to, you know, our, our student work and getting out to different, different areas to create more engagement. But I don't know.
I think one of the topics I know, I spoke to briefly about David, but based on the candidates that, that introduced themselves as, as potential board members, as well as some general feedback. One of the areas that I wanted to get the board's feedback is if we wanted to consider putting onto a future agenda kind of how to engage teachers or more broadly staff in terms of providing feedback. And there's certainly a variety of mechanisms today that any, any one of our district employees could come to the board, either through you with a, with a recommendation on an agenda item, through the public comments section of every board meeting. I know we're all available through email, and our phone numbers are publicized. And then we have a school board feedback email as well. So there are certainly a number of available avenues for any staff member to provide feedback or areas of concern or suggestions for improvement. But I wondered if the board wanted to add to a future agenda, just a discussion around potentially, we have a similar process, maybe for our student representatives, that we consider some kind of a non-voting staff representation, if there was interest and if there was some value to that. And there may be a number of solutions. I'm just suggesting we.
I was gonna say, I would, yeah, I would like a broader discussion, specifically a representative. The nice thing about the student representatives is they already have sort of behind them Student Council and some other ways of gathering a range of feedback that can then inform what they're saying. It might be, I don't know, the buttons are necessarily in place in the same way for teachers. So we might want to talk about as well something that looks a little more like the Citizens Budget Advisory Group, but for teachers. But it, because a lot of the mechanisms we have in place right now really are fine avenues for individual feedback or questions to us. But in terms of sort of polling or getting a sense of where teachers are on different issues or raising things that we might not be aware of that, that are becoming issues for them, it's, we don't really have a great mechanism for gathering input from.
And I would make it broader than teachers as well.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm using that as shorthand, but yes, teachers and staff, yes.
Is, is the board amenable to kind of parking that on a future agenda item? So if we could do that, David?
I would like it to be a soon future agenda item, though we have a, we have a way of parking things on a future agenda and then struggling to get them actually scheduled. So.
What would you like to call that specific? Just staff representative?
Well, I mean, we, we, when we were working on a staff voice or staff, because board rep is very narrow, I would say staff voice or staff input mechanism or something like that.
We can fine tune that. And I think, Bridget, you had another area there.
Yeah, I had a couple of other ones. One was transparency, and, and I've heard that not just from the folks who ran against me, but I think a lot of times we think we're being quite transparent. We think we're having very broad discussions in public. We think that we're, we're doing things like sharing more information, you know, on the, the board Facebook page or, or posting more things on the school district website. But I think some of it's still pretty complicated, and there might be ways of making things clearer and more transparent for folks. And I think that's another broad discussion that we need to have. I think it looks like our budget worksheet that we use as our, our primary tool for talking to the public about what our budget, you know, sort of comes down to and, and how that affects tax rate and those kinds of things will probably have to be redesigned to a certain extent. And I think that actually is an opportunity for us as well to sort of think about other tools that we might use, just to be more transparent and, and provide sort of, especially on the financial side, more information during the year. Because we, we have it right now laid out in a good schedule for us as we're making decisions. But in terms of just updating people, really, it's, it's sort of right down to the, the budget development process. There are a couple of key meetings, and if you happen to miss those key meetings in the budget development process, it's not really clear which meetings to go to or where to go to get, you know, how are we doing this year so far? Or, you know, those kinds of pieces of information. So I think that we should probably have a broader discussion about that. And I think, you know, some sort of reporting tool would be really, really helpful. You know, one idea is to have the Citizens Budget Advisory Group sort of help, if we could reactivate them perhaps to a certain extent in helping with this, or, or some other group of, of folks so that people outside of us, who are sort of buried in it all the time, can tell us what would be helpful and what would make things clearer for them. So that would be good.
I just, if the rest of the board is amenable, I kind of put that, that seems like there's a number of topics that might constitute a retreat at some point, but I just put that one, since you helped on the naming the other one, like tools for transparency?
Yes, yes. I think that'd be great. And then the third one is not one that I necessarily heard a lot about, but it's more a sense that I had as we, not just through election, but through budget season, really sort of getting our assessment system set up in a way that we also have reporting tools on how students are doing and, and what people are really getting for their tax dollars. And right now, we're sort of relying on a lot of this outside information from outside people ranking us or, you know, all of that. And it would just be, I think it would be more helpful for the public to have a better sense of our own assessment of how we're doing in terms of the outcomes that we're achieving. I know that all goes back to our ends monitoring and, and all of that. But as we're talking about ends monitoring, some sort of reporting to the public on that, not just sort of the policy monitoring that we're doing, I think would be helpful. So I think that might be a separate topic also on the future agenda.
Is everyone amenable to adding that one as well?
Yeah. And you just briefly mentioned.
And you just briefly mentioned a retreat. So...
It's pretty typical. I think we actually have something on the calendar for a timeframe, but it's pretty typical after a board reorganizes to set aside a period of time that we really cover a lot of the topics that aren't, aren't operational in nature, that are a little more community-based.
Right. Would that be something we might do on a Saturday morning or a different Wednesday night?
It could be based on availability. I don't think we've taken up any specific action at this point. I think it's on the board calendar. There's an earmarked month for a retreat, but I don't know when that is offhand. You don't have that handy, do you, David?
No, I don't. I don't think I do.
I think it's actually supposed to be March or April. I really do. I think it's...
Well, it's supposed to be after reorganization, so...
Yeah, I think in the list of board meetings, there's sort of, if you go to the school website, there's a, there's a list of board meetings and there's a sort of placeholder that says to be scheduled. Yeah. And I remember last year, we did, we, it's a retreat sort of, in my mind, means more, you're thinking of Alex, which is, you know, we go offsite someplace and, you know, we have different sessions and stuff. In the past, we've more done, it's basically an extra meeting. I mean, it's basically an extra long meeting.
We've done it both ways over the years where there was more of a Saturday morning, kind of four hours. They're typically, unless there's a specific executive session topic, it's typically in public or available to the public. So, but maybe, David, if I could ask that we work with, work on identifying a date and then looking at future agenda items, maybe we can come up with a calendar of, of topics that we'd cover at that.
Yeah, I do, you know, while we're, you know, the voting information, I think is a big component of transparency, reporting and assessment. I mean, part of that is, you know, how can we, you know, what do we think about our engagement? What do we think about our participation? What would be a target that we would like to see? You know, do we have any particular concerns around how people are informing us? You know, could, could we look to increase some of our percentages overall, you know? I mean, we've talked about this a lot, but I think it, it does, there's a lot of information. And I think this could be a, you know, some of our election information and voting, voter participation could be important to that.
Anything else on election results? Okay. We'll move on to agenda item 13, the school district calendar.
So you've got a calendar in front of you and it is worn for action. A few things that happen in this regard is every region in Vermont is obligated to come up with a regionalized calendar. So the Champlain Valley has an April 1 obligation to, to come up with a regional calendar that then allows for local schools, school districts and supervisory unions up and down the Champlain Valley to then do what they need to do to adopt their own calendar based on their contractual obligations. For us, the, the Champlain Valley regional calendar is requirement is that it's 175 days and that we have days in common to get to the 175. This would mean vacations, specifically vacation, start time, end time are determined. And then local schools have to add the additional days. So we, in this case, have to add additional five school days and then we have to have 189 by contract for, for our teachers. So this calendar reflects that. It pretty closely mirrors the, the current year that we're in. Last year, we came to you with some pretty, pretty big requests around early releases or late starts as a way for us to get the necessary professional development and move on the things that we feel are critically important. So this is important. Obviously, we've got moms, dads and, and community members that look to have the calendar adopted so that they can begin to do the necessary planning. I did ask Stuart, we, we did get a few comments and I want to make sure that we're, you know, making sure we're aware of that. We did get a fair amount of concerns around some of the, either the frequency or the tightness of some of the, of the, of the dates. This calendar has a little bit of some reflective change. But all of the days that we've had before continue to be pretty much the same. Stuart, and then I'm open to take questions from other board members. Anything you wanted to add to?
I just want to add that, you know, when we came with this calendar, we had talked about the types and levels of work between now and 2020, you know, when the first class graduates from proficiency and generally got a commitment to keep this same level of calendar at least through that time. But I, I have to tell you, especially at the elementary level, you know, which, you know, in some ways is always the most controversial because elementary kids need looking after it, you know, they can't just go home or, or what have you, is that that time has really been essential. You know, the elementary teachers are faced with more change than everybody else because they teach every single subject. And this year, we have focused on during those times, a rotation that includes trauma, math literacy and science. And next year, we're going to continue with the trauma work, but we have to add the social studies work because the state just passed new social studies standards. And really, for the elementary people, this is totally brand new. And it's very different from the middle and the high school people who are experts in, you know, in the fields that they teach. So it is really essential that we continue this work. And this work, just one last thing, only reflects part of, because teachers are doing within their day or after their day, a considerable amount of either professional development and/or work necessary for state regulations. So for example, on April 15, 15, April 5th, 4th, whatever the next first April board meeting, I'll be presenting to you the continuous improvement plan for the district. This is many hours of work of a committee. And every school has a plan as well that we come into shortly thereafter. And teachers use their own time with their administrators to examine data, do problems of practice. And this is a very big shift, you know, in the last couple of years that are part of the educational quality standards. So this only reflects, you know, a sense of the tip of the iceberg of the kind of work that, that teachers are doing within their time so that it can get done. So I just want to say that this is so essential to making sure we continue to do the work we do.
Thank you, Stuart. There's no question that in the 189 days that we have, it's hard to do all that we're trying to do. No question. That's what, that's what we have. And we've tried to strike the balance around making sure that we're providing the professional development and still maintaining the instructional components in time that we can, can do that. In, in most cases, not all, but the high school, they have, for instance, been able to still keep the same schedule. Some of their, some of their, what I want to say, I'm not going to get this right. It's not FaceTime. Is it FaceTime still? FaceTime is shortened. And so it, it does allow for shorter periods, but they are still able to get the same content in on those particular days. So not the same amount of time, but they're still able to get to those subject areas. So we know, we know this continues to be a big ask for the community. We've worked hard to, to make sure the communications have gone out. We have gotten, I think board got one this afternoon. Again, I want to be really clear about that. And it was really about, you know, providing professional development, you know, adding more days to the teacher contract. I believe that was it and, and doing it then.
It was sort of the suggestions that if you can get 200 days...
That'd be good, yeah. So...
We could change this.
Well, I think the, the primary concern, I just looked it up from at least one community member, was the number of early release days for elementary school. And this indicates there's nine new early release days?
Well, there are nine new, there are nine days.
Newly added nine early release days.
Yeah, and this would be reflective of the, of the past, right?
So in the past, there were three or four, given a particular year's early release days that started at 11:30. And then, and last year, we made it nine that started at 12:30. So it's a short amount of time out of school. But there are more days and more hours. You know, I gave a whole hour by piece. We did a whole report last year when we did this. So, you know, you could look at it as there are six more days than there had been the previous year, not this year, but the previous year for a shorter duration of time. And I, I also do think individually, because, you know, our Schools Out program does start early. I know that there are some people who just use Schools Out. You know, Lee has been very flexible around some of these issues. And I think that we can address, you know, individual needs, you know, pretty well, especially if people know ahead of time what's, what's happening. I'm not saying it's perfect.
Well, and some of the concern, again, you know, this is one community member, but, and, but it resonates. But over the entire school year, there are only four two-week periods without any early releases, holidays or days off. So in terms of, you know, a, a working family where both parents or adults may work, or even one for that matter, the amount of time off to accommodate half-days or early release days, they were paying somebody else to care for children. It, the feedback is really, it's becoming unsupportable, combined with maybe, you know, short personal vacations. So they're being used up. So I do have a concern about how this has migrated. I know the commitment was to stay steady till that 2020 timeframe or, or go down. But I do worry about the families and the impact of the number of early release or, you know, non-contiguous days where there has to be some accommodation made. And my sense is, in some cases, it's an all or nothing. It's not for a couple hours. It's really the whole day off or, or not.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not wanting to say there isn't those concerns. We have, as Stuart indicated, worked hard with, you know, our, like Schools Out to be accommodative and sensitive to cost to accommodate. And, and part of that is we, we've been able to do that. And I think part of the reason, and again, unless you've gotten a ton more concerns, we haven't received a lot of negative feedback. And where we have, we've been able to, you know, respond and help, help moms and dads and guardians with those particular issues so that there is, you know, some sensitivity around that. We, we get it. I mean, part of that is we're, we're trying to make sure we're preparing and readying for the professional development needs that we have that are coming our way. And so this is, again, chunking it this way. Definitely, we've gotten positive feedback from the staff. It's a lot of work for the staff too because it's, it's not that they're, you know, not preparing and not teaching. It's also being ready and prepared for the professional development activities that are going on. So I, I hear what, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I brought this up last year too. And this is a concern. And as an elementary parent, this is a real concern, especially when, March. I mean, March is, it's, we've just come off a, a week and a half long break. And then the very next week, there's an in-service day. And so it's only a four-day week. And then there's one full week, and then there's an early release day. And it's, it's, it is asking a lot. And Schools Out is not the be all, end all. There are a lot of families, mine included, who don't use Schools Out. And to ask us to try to sign up for Schools Out and pay for Schools Out and, you know, make alternate arrangements, you know, at least a day a month is, is asking a lot. And so I have a concern about the timing of them. I still have a concern about the number of them. I was concerned about the number of them even after we had the presentation about professional development. I'm also concerned, and this is anecdotal, and it's, it's my little focus group of one, which is, you know, but I know at least twice this year, the third graders have been lumped together to watch a movie so that other things, other meetings can happen during the school day. And my question is how much stuff, time that is supposed to be spent on instruction or on learning or on something else for those children during the days that are supposed to be full days is going to other activities, is going to planning, is going to... My understanding is that those were times where they were working on assessment of students and trying to decide, you know, what, you know, planning for, for the next term or planning for, you know, where different students are within the grade. But still, it feels like we're, we're asked to, you know, have a lot of early release days as parents. And then on top of that, it feels like during the school day, there's a little bit of, I don't know what to call it, but it, it feels like some instructional time is being leached away to do some of the things that I would assume would be happening on early release days or would be happening on in-service days or be happening during times when the kids are not in the building. So, yeah, I have some concerns about, I, I had concerns about last year and I specifically delayed action on it, I remember, because I said, you know, the, the early release days are too close to breaks. We need to really think about carefully where they are. And frankly, the calendar that came back in July that we did then approve was not really all that different than, than the one in April or in March. And so I, I don't have a perfect solution because I am not the person who runs professional development and I don't know, you know, why there need to be so many and why they have to be these half-days where, or why they couldn't be combined into, you know, a single day completely off, you know, which is sometimes easier to plan for a long weekend than to sort of have the child in school and then have to plan for an afternoon, frankly. But I just, it just sort of feels like we keep hearing a nod that, yes, we understand this is challenging and then nothing's really done about it. So I don't know, I don't have the perfect solution, but I feel like something needs to be done about it.
David, what's the, from an ADM standpoint, what's the number of hours that kids are in school that it's counted for a full day?
As long as they're, as long as they actually are provided lunch, that counts as a day.
So one of the things that came up in the past that I know it came up because I asked the question is really, within this calendar, how many full student days are there? And, and by that, I would say not the ones that qualify for ADM, but really the number of days students are here, the hours that we intend them to be here. Is, is that something that's easily assessed on this calendar?
Well, you could take, I mean, yes, I mean, you, you can do it. I, I don't have it, I haven't added it up here yet. But you can certainly exclude the, you know, any of those early release days. All of essentially the, the non-highlighted areas are complete days, with the exceptions of some of the, you know, the bracket.
Does this calendar meet the...
It does meet the regional calendar. The regional calendar actually has five less days, school days, than, than, than the one that we have. And most contracts, you know, have variability between 180 days to, you know, 187. We're on the higher end at 189. So when you, when you look at that, the other part is if we were to do some of those other days in order to get the 180 days in, you begin to look at, you know, going into school into July, right? Just to get the days that you need to get in. So that also, those shoulder, and again, a lot of people give us, have concerns about when we start, you know, in that, in that August period. So, you know, those are, those are some of the, the components that, that add to the complexity of where we can, where we can pick up additional days to get to our 180, you know? We do have to abide by the regional calendar, 175 common. If we go outside the common days, we can petition, which we have in the past. But I, I can tell you that that's, that sometimes gets to be challenging, the beginning and the ending. And we also get a lot of feedback from people when we're needing to push into like the end of June for the end of the year. That has not, not been a positive response in the past, in my past years. Alex?
Yeah. So a lot of the late starts to early releases, actually, they're all on Fridays. And I believe that is so that the teacher's going to attend training of some sort or another? Can you fill us in on that, please?
Actually, yes. So the main reason they're actually on Fridays is because there's a fixed schedule at the high school on, when they flip blues and gray days. So Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday are always, Mondays are either always blue or always gray. And that allows students, because of their vocational center, because of other ways that we interact with other schools and being more efficient. And so the Friday is the day that one week it's blue, one week it's gray. And so in that way, kids don't miss the same classes. So that in a given, two release days, they're set up so one release day would be on a gray day, one release day would be on a blue day.
And you, and these have been, the early releases have been coordinated so that...
That's right.
You get the same, same amount of blue and the same amount of gray.
Right. So that students don't lose instruction because most kids take a course every other day. And so if it was always a blue day...
Yes.
That, that would, that would definitely have an impact. On the elementary, it, it isn't as much an issue. We had a discussion about that, whether we wanted to switch that day. But it was felt by the principals at least that Fridays was a, was a better day. But it was felt by the principals at least that Fridays was a, was a better day. Just because if people were planning to go away for the weekend, you know, wasn't in the middle of their Wednesday.
Yeah.
You know, that there was some things for students in terms of that. We also often lose young kids who are in travel teams on Friday afternoons and in some ways, not that we're doing everything for them. And I don't mean our travel teams. I'm talking about kids who do youth hockey, who do, you know, youth soccer and so on. That Friday just seemed to be a better day.
Absenteeism tends to be lower on those days.
Right.
Okay. So, so getting to my question is what, can you, can you give us an overview of what's covered on these days? On the in-surfaces, not for the kids, but for the teachers?
Yes. So on, as I said in the beginning, at the elementary level, those nine half or little less than half-days, starting at 12:30, which means really starting at. 1:15.
Yeah.
For teachers. That we have been doing a rotation at the elementary level. We've been working with a consultant around issues of trauma. We've been working with VEEP on science standards. And our own literacy and math coaches have been running a math and literacy strand is the third strand. And the way that it has worked this year is we have used the same. So if at Orchard, you're doing the trauma resilience work, and then at Chamberlain, you're doing the math work. And at Central, you're doing the science work, then everybody shifts. So that over this time, everybody's getting the same information. But one of the things that we did, we used to lose in our half-days, we would do everybody together because there were only three of them. And then we lost transportation time because people had to get to Central School. So we cut out the, that loss of time by bringing this, the, the professional development to them. So that's what it looks like at the elementary school. Those are the three rotations, like I said. Next year, one will definitely be the continuation of the work on trauma, as we've talked about, and Joanne particularly. This is one of the areas we really have to focus on is long-term. And as I said, the social studies work for the elementary school because, you know, it's a new, it's a new set of standards by the state. And we have not had time with everything else they're doing to really start to work on that. At the middle and high school, at the middle work, they've mostly been working on personal learning plans and they're moving to project-based learning. They've been working with the Tarrant Institute and has been providing their in-service on the early release days for the high school. It has been on the proficiency-based graduation requirements and on their NIASC work, you know, in getting ready for the study that will be next fall to continue their certification. So those have been the general pieces within that. You know, one day we did do, worked with our consultant on resiliency and trauma with the middle school, just as an intro. You know, during some of that time. But that's generally the, the overarching pieces that we've done this year. We do have a three-year professional development calendar, which I certainly would be happy to share with the board to show what the plans are in terms of the key topics that we cover for the next three years.
Okay. I guess what, what I was wondering is, is Friday afternoon really a good time to be introducing, you know, new teaching? Or, or not, or new training? That's got to be somewhat intense. You, you can't just ride through it. You have to keep your focus to it. And, and then there's, then there's the weekend. So, you know, I, you know, I would, I would approach this, at least what I've heard from people who go to graduate school, is that when you learn something new and intense, you have to, you have to do the homework as soon as you get it. So, so when the class ends, you know, the professor's gone home, then you get to work on it. You don't have to wait, you don't wait until Sunday night or the end of the week to do it. And, and it seems as though having training on Friday afternoon might lessen the effectiveness of it. Because teachers have the whole weekend to forget about it. And then I don't think that they do, you know, I trust the professionalism of them. But if, wouldn't it be more effective for them if it were done perhaps on a Monday morning? So what they learned, they could apply right away. As opposed to have to wait two days the following Monday to apply it.
Well, I think, I think we, I mean, we spoke to some, I mean, first of all, a day is a day. And we, you know, we expect if, if we're having a professional development day, that people are present. As Stuart said, you know, that 1:15 start at the end for, for the elementary day to the end of the day. We expect that they're going to be present and they're going to be working on it.
Oh, yeah.
That said, there's, there is, as you've so indicated, there is some frequency here. So there's accountability that it's not going to be once, once every three months. It's, it is a reoccurring and there is expectations around that professional learning that then it's, it's learned and then it begins to be applied. We, we, again, I think everybody recognizes that it's a lot. It's a big ask. That said, we've been very, very aware that we are moving on some big, big things. And we are trying to be, you know, out front and proactive around our learning. We know of many of our colleagues around the state are saying, we, we can't, they're not getting it done. And it's a big, big problem currently, which a lot of them don't know how to do that. And again, whether it's proficiency-based, a lot of them, a lot of our, our fellow schools aren't doing much at all. They're just, I, I think, going to wait and see if it's enforced. And we're trying to be as proactive as you can, as we can, at the same time, being sensitive to the, to the amount of time. So again, I think that, you know, the Friday could be also questioned on the middle of the week. Wednesday could also be questioned on Monday. Is that really the best time? And, and as again, we, you know, some of it's got some connected absenteeism to it. We, we often have a little bit. So we're trying to be mindful to the best of our ability.
In terms of morning, afternoon, because, you know, they, they did late starts for elementary students in the Mount Mansfield School District. And that's very hard for parents. Not that after-school is easy. But for young kids, because there isn't, you're, if you have a provider, whether it's Schools Out or a private provider, if you let them know there's nine extra days, there's usually something that can be done. I'm not saying it's perfect for everybody. But if it's mornings and I have to get to work, there, my provider isn't available. There is no Schools Out. There is no piece. So we, based on experiences of other districts, we really looked at that carefully for the elementary kids about whether it should be a late start or an early release. And early release seem to be less impactful, not, not, not impactful, less impactful. And in terms of Wednesdays versus Fridays versus Tuesdays.
The other day.
You know, we did have that discussion. You know, and again, the elementary, you know, there's been a discussion administrators and the elementary principals felt that Friday was the most effective day. I, I don't have an oar in that water per se. I just know we need the time.
Stuart?
All right. Thank you both.
Is there any additional information any board member would like that would cause us to postpone action on this calendar?
Is there a spreadsheet somewhere that says how many hours? You know, I haven't done the math. Is there a spreadsheet someplace?
We did it, we did it last year and it's readily available.
Yeah, it would be.
It was all presented to you as pretty thoroughly because it was a big ask last year.
No, my point is not, not the overall, I, I mean, what this calendar looks like versus last year's calendar. I would like to see us tracking what the trend is and making sure that we're staying true to what we agreed to and not having creep because it feels like there's an extra early release day in here. It feels like there's an extra, there's an extra late start for the middle school and high school. So I, I, I would like to see that spreadsheet if it's not too much trouble before we take action on it.
Can we accommodate that?
You can. I think there's, you've, we've got a lot of people that are clamoring for, for the, for the calendar, you know? So it far outweighs, weighs the concerns that we've been hearing. It's like, when is the calendar going to be adopted? You know, where are we at? That said, yeah.
I, I don't believe there's any.
No, Bridget isn't saying that. She's just, I mean, I, I think she's wanting some validation of, of that same.
It seemed to me, and maybe my count was off. It seemed to me that there was one extra early release day for elementary and it felt like there was one extra middle school late start. Maybe I miscounted. That's what I'm saying. It would be helpful for me to have the spreadsheet of how many student, like that would sum up to how many student hours we're talking about. The other thing is, and I know this is a minor thing, but that last March early release day. Like I said, March, it feels like the kids are barely in school. If there's anything that can be done, even to move it a week later or, you know, some other place on the calendar.
You mean that March 15th?
Uh, no, the March 29th. The March 15th has been, you know, it's, it's been in the calendar and all that. But that's, you know, in that month, we kind of stuck in that extra early release day at the end of March.
Oh, I see. The early, really, 29th.
The 29th, yes.
Yes. And, and in fact. I, I don't believe that there was a March or is a March release day in this year's calendar. It was in June and we took the elementary one out of June and moved it into March because people just felt June was a little crazy, but we could move that back. So I, I'm, I'm just saying that that was one of the tweaks that we made. It was an extra time. But it was taking the early release day out of the June schedule, which already has a certain amount of field days, early release days and other pieces and putting it in a place where it'd be less impactful to instruction. But that's why that's there. But in terms of actual. Increase in time, there isn't. It's just that because of the blue-gray day schedule, it, you know, there may, it looks like three on the calendar, but it really is because they don't align the same way that they did last year. So if you look at February, for example, the eighth is a release day. In the past, it might've been on the first, you know, and the 15th, the middle school one. The elementary one would be listed separately. That's all.
So we'll shift this to the April 4th agenda and look to get that year-over-year comparison on the spreadsheet. And maybe some consideration for that March date. Any other feedback? All right. We'll move on to item 14, master planning and visioning.
So that's in your packet. Again, this was prepared for the last board meeting. I, I haven't updated it. I don't necessarily need to read through the whole thing, but wanted to just give you at least the topical components of it. So high school, middle school, the safety, the facility study that Dor Whitier has done, actually. We've, we've, we've received it back and now we've also got the cost estimating on that. And again, we're, we're soon, actually have a meeting planned coming up on that particular area. So this is all again factoring into our work towards the April 30th deadline that we are trying to hold firm on around giving that appropriate feedback back to the board. The building capacity, again, we have been working on that because that's an, that's a major component. And so we've taken a pretty pragmatic approach to that is to make sure we're looking at the actual spaces and looking at the actual square footage and using, you know, the state formula. We've also poked at some other states and how they're doing it. And this utilization factor, we've also, you know, been making sure we're consistent with that so that we're really wanting to dig down and be a little bit more diligent about that, that capacity piece. As far as the noise monitoring at Chamberlain, we are in the queue for doing the ATC sound testing, coming up in April. And where we're looking at classroom interference levels. And so that's currently in the queue. We will be, we have a meeting actually tomorrow. I think Bridget's going to hopefully make it. So we'll be getting a little bit more specifics from ATC around the parameters that we're, that we're needing to adhere to. The criteria threshold, which I spoke just a little bit about, is, which also includes the, the SWOT analysis or the strengths, weaknesses and opportunities analysis, is really an active. You know, component that helps kind of assess the, the levels of concern or need. And so that will be, that's in the process. And what I'm saying is I, we do need to bring it, I'd like to get it back in front of the board a couple times just to make sure it's, you know, answering any questions that you have. So it is a viable tool. Some of you have provided some, some feedback on, on that, which has been helpful. And then lastly is the noise mitigation piece, which is somewhat associated to, to the previous. But this is more specifically about getting the actual act of sound insulation done. So we have been pursuing actively with the Burlington International Airport and the FAA. We've written letters in sequence to them and we have recently, because we have not yet gotten any response or response to sound insulate, we've also recently sent a letter off to our DC delegation. And that's Congressman Welch, Senators Sanders and Leahy for them to assist us in, in getting a response. And we have heard nothing yet. So that's, I think, the, a quick update on that process.
Have we had a board meeting since Bridget and I met with you? I'm just trying to remember.
It's so long ago, it seems. I don't think we have.
Uh, no, and because that, one of the things I want to bring up, there are a couple things I want to bring up from that meeting. I don't know if you want to go.
No, please, please, please.
Um, first, I want to just take a quick step back. This threshold criteria for SWOT analysis, I think those are really two separate things. The threshold criteria was some sort of monitoring tool to kind of understand where we are at any given moments and make sure that we're not kind of getting close to, you know, a capacity issue, for example, or, or those kinds of things. The SWOT analysis for me is a bigger step back, kind of, that's a real strategic process of really sitting down and assessing what those strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats are. And I don't really feel like we've done that yet. I feel like we need to sit down and do that. So that's something I think we really need to talk about as a board. That's maybe something we need to dig into a little deeper, you know, on a night where we don't have such a full agenda or perhaps a retreat or something like that. The other one is that Martin and I, and, and John Stewart and David talked about at our last subcommittee meeting was this, as we sort of get the results from the first stage of the high school and middle school analysis. And that's really just sort of an assessment of where the buildings are and where critical upgrades might be. Really, the next phase that we had been talking about is, is starting to have the architects look at, you know, what different options would cost. I really feel like there is an interim step between those, which is to make sure that we're driving capital investments based on our, our needs for curriculum and things that the community and, and the district and the teachers and staff and everybody wants to achieve, you know, through our programming, making sure those programming needs are driving that process. So there really is a need for an interim step, I think, that draws in different viewpoints on, on what those things are that we want in the next, you know, phase of the middle school and the high school. Some of them are obviously things that are, are, have been on the agenda for a long time. You know, the one, it's, it's not as important, maybe as some others, but it is important. For example, NIASC has already identified that we need a bigger gym at the middle school. But there are more complicated ones. You know, what do we want actual classroom spaces to look like? And that needs to be driven by what we want the curriculum to look like. Are there major things that are missing or things that we're doing now that we don't need to be doing going forward? And how would that affect what those spaces would look like? And I was just really concerned that I don't feel like that is something we can hand over to an architect to kind of give us suggestions on. We need to really have a sense of that and give the architects instruction as to what we want them to go and cost out in terms of potential upgrades to those buildings.
I'm in perfect agreement with that. And I think that's the intention that we've, that we've communicated administratively from the very beginning. So I, I think where I may not be communicating that, that is exactly our expectation. Currently, we're doing just that facility piece. We have not yet wandered into that second phase. As you know, it, it's part of the next budget, which will start in July. And they'll take with that, in, we'll take with that when we assess, what are the conditions of the building? But more importantly, what drives it is what are the spaces that we want? When you put it together, what are the spaces that we want to, you know, engage the instruction that we want? We'll be able to put those together and say, how, how are we going to do that, right? And we'll be able to articulate that, I think, appropriately.
But that's my concern is that, that there's money in the budget for.
Well, for July 1.
For July 1, for the architect piece.
Well, it's not really architect only, Bridget. It's, it's, the big component of that is going to be committee work, which is, which will likely involve an architect. We haven't necessarily framed that out. There's nobody who's been awarded that work. It will be a committee and that committee will be certainly heavily populated with classroom teachers with, with high resolution to instructional practices that we want. It will involve touring. It will be involved watching, you know, lessons happen and in spaces that. and in spaces that we hope are going to allow for the best possible instructional methodologies to, to happen. So, y- you're right, we, we do need to frame that up. We haven't spent a lot of time on what that process is going to look like, or who's gonna be involved. I will tell you that it's not just, I mean, my expectation is not all to the architect. It's pretty elaborate in a population people be engaged.
Yeah, and I guess my, my misunderstanding of that is that, no, we haven't granted phase two to anyone. But, most of the firms that gave us bids, bid for both phases, and it just so happens that the architect who bid and was awarded phase one. Phase two, it costs with them about what's in the budget for next year. So I guess that was a misunderstanding on my part, that that was ever actually planned. Because the way, and the way their proposal is written is, you know, hey, we have this education experts, you know, we have someone who used to work in a school district, who's more of an educational consultant, who will help shape that process and drive it. And I think we discussed at our last subcommittee meeting that I'm uncomfortable with the architecture firm driving that conversation and facilitating it, that, that we need to figure out sooner rather than later, before we actually start having the architects do phase two. Um, yes, they can be involved, they need to understand what the concerns and the needs are, obviously, and the more they're integrated in that, the better. But I, I'm just deeply uncomfortable with an architect, even if he is someone who has been a teacher or has been in a school district, I'm deeply uncomfortable with them driving that process.
Agreed, and I, I'm, I don't disagree with that. And, um, I was pretty clear with the architects. Again, we, in the previous year budget, we decoupled that particular portion because of the budget constraints. And, and we, I've been pretty clear with making certain that it's, it is decoupled. You know, for the current architecture, architect that's been doing this work, I've been pretty, that, that's not, that's not yours.
Right.
That's gonna have to be bid out. There is forty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget for that particular. And, um, it, it certainly was used as a benchmark from the, from the architect. But that said, if we don't need to use it all.
Right.
We won't use it all.
So I guess my question, and maybe this question for Elizabeth, is where is the appropriate venue for us to have the discussion of how we develop that process or shape it? Um, or who the right people are to have in the room for that discussion of how we shape whatever, um, task force or, you know, group we're talking about to really lay out what we're hoping for, for the next, you know.
Elizabeth, it sounds like, it sounds like you're in agreement, David, on that.
Second step.
From a timing standpoint, um, what would be the appropriate time to have, have that recommendation made?
The recommendation for.
For that working group.
For how the working group looks, or for who is on, uh, uh?
More shaping that group, and, I mean, maybe you've thought about it already. Do you have, do you have a group in mind that you're anticipating pulling together to do that work?
Uh, I do not have a named group. I, I would like representation, obviously, from the, the schools in which we're talking about, you know. Um, I would want a pretty, you know, good cross-section of, of, of folks that work in and around that particular content area, or curriculum area, or grade level. I, I want, I'd like to have some, uh, community. I'd like to have some board, you know, board representation, and certainly administrative representation, so.
And, and what's the timeframe to pull that together? I guess if I'm hearing what you're asking.
Yeah, so July one, really, I, I can't do anything before, you know, the, the next budget cycle. Just the way, you know, budgeting works. I would think that it would be likely scattered over the first half, first quarter of the school year, so that we're able to inform the budget process, phase three or not, to the future. So, you know, we start out in September. I think we'd be, try to do September, October, November timeframe, so that it would be a component of the budget could be included if that was a direction, you know.
Is that, is that the.
You mean the budget for phase three?
FY nineteen, twenty.
Okay, but, right, okay.
This is, this is scoping out the phase two you're talking about.
Right, right.
So phase two, which doesn't, I mean, would start this year, so eighteen, nineteen school year. I'm simply saying the information that's gathered in that particular phase would need to inform the budget information. It should, at least should ask that question, so that then it could impact, if at all, the following year, nineteen, twenty. Right? So, otherwise, you miss, you, you miss some of those cycles around doing that.
Well, that's my concern, is that I understand we can't spend money on the task force process at all. But the question is whether the organization of it, which I understand involves time and money, and it involves some time, and it involves some work to get that committee together. Because my concern is that there's sort of the, the visioning piece, the actual, you know, what we want for the curriculum and for the instruction, and then the architects have to do some more work. I mean, they have to go back, and they have to give us some cost for anything that would then be in a budgeting process. And that takes time. And so, my concern is if we don't really start to gather the task force and start to have those discussions. These are pretty big, broad discussions about what we want for the future of, of learning in the middle school and the high school. Um, my concern is that those discussions will really only be wrapping up about the time we're sort of, you know, done and dusted with the budget and ready to approve a budget for the following year, so that we sort of lose an entire budget cycle.
Well, if you back, if you back into that scenario, the probability of having a full working committee over the summer is limited too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're kind of backed into having something.
But the organization of the committee, so the committee can start working when the school year started, is a different thing. And that is something that I feel like we need to really start thinking of as a board, rather than waiting to start talking about that really till late in the summer, and then starting to gather people, and then have people really do work in October and November and December. If we can sort of start to form that committee and have them ready to go late in the summer or early in the school year, that's a different thing.
I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, we, I mean, I think this is a good conversation. We can come back and, you know, we can talk about that populating that, that group and make sure that it does have the representation that you want. I mean, to be real clear, I, I mean, I'm, we're, we're being pretty tapped out with trying to, you know, do a variety of things. So, um, I think first and foremost is to do, you know, our due diligence around the threshold analysis, which we're looking at outcomes, we're looking at cost, we're looking at safety and security of those analyses, which I think are a really, really big part, which from my perspective would drive the assessment of that SWOT analysis, the strengths that we see in our system based on that analysis, the, um, the, the weaknesses that we see, the opportunities and those threats. So, I, I, I see that in doing the threshold work, and again, it's hard for you to see it and see all of the, the measurements there. You've seen it a couple times, but then be able to show you with some level of articulation where we're, it could be that we're, we're all just in the strength category, we don't have any areas of weaknesses, and therefore, you know, we don't really need to do much. I don't think that's the case. We know that we've got some pretty significant issues.
So is there, just to kind of bring some closure, is there another meeting?
Yes.
Of the subcommittee that this could be discussed further with the recommendation?
On the, I think we've set a couple up. I think they were actually identified in here, April. Well, we're gonna try to bring back some other updates to the board, April fourth and eighteenth, which is in part of that. And then, uh, we've talked about, I don't have the exact dates, but we need to get some dates.
I was gonna say, I don't have any dates in my calendar for the subcommittee meeting. I have, I have the one for tomorrow, specifically on Chamberlain, and then the noise testing, I don't know that I have in my calendar unless I've, I've somehow dropped it off.
The goal for us is to try to get two or three subcommittee meetings together in conjunction with the, the fourth and the eighteenth. So that we walk into the thirtieth with, you know, some informs.
So it sounds like if, if this topic can be included in a subcommittee meeting to be scheduled between the fourth and the nineteenth, that would potentially accommodate.
That's, that's our objective, apparently, right?
Does that work?
It does. I just wanted to make sure that we brought it up as a whole board.
Yeah.
Before we went into the last part of, you know, well, it feels like the last part, even though April hasn't started yet, but it feels like we're already sort of mentally almost there. That everyone's a com, that's, everyone's comfortable with this approach of having some kind of task force or some kind of group that we're pulling together to really do a little bit of the educational visioning before really phase two of the architecture work starts.
Are, are there any comments or questions on Bridget's recommendation and David's plan as well?
I hashed this out a little further in a task, in a, in a committee, uh, where we can focus on it a little bit longer. I can do the ninth of April. I'm gone the following Monday. We can't do other days that week, those weeks.
Thank you, Martin.
I, certainly, certainly buy off on the need for that interim step, as you articulated it, Bridget, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the ninth of April will be fine, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on committee work update? All right, we'll move on to agenda item fifteen, the executive limitations policy monitoring on two point four and ends monitoring on academic proficiency.
Mm-hmm.
Did we get two point four?
Yes, it's in your packet. So this is, um, this is coming, this is coming back to you again. This is not the first read. It is worn for action. We've made some changes, um, based on some recommendation that those are highlighted in yellow. I don't know how you'd like to go through it. John can highlight some of the specific things if you wish. Um, we did have one on detail policy eight, I think, that was one of the specific areas of feedback. So, John, you want to do a quick highlighting?
The biggest item here was, um, on the policy eight, um, itself, uh, plus the superintendent's interpretation. That's on page seven of ten of this document. And I'm, I'm suggesting that detail policy eight, instead of reading, um, um, don't spend surplus, is that you should not spend the prior year's undesignated fund balance. Um, simply, um, kind of clarify, um, what that means, both in the, quickly in the policy itself, and then in the interpretation. And the, the question that came from that was that, um, if the board could see the, the before and after language. So, we did include before, in front of this, um, actual monitoring report, the, a page just showing the, the before and after language. And, uh, that's, like I say, right in front of the policy document itself, the monitoring document. And I, I guess what, what I kind of was queasy about the first year I did this, and then in the second year, was the first, mostly the first sentence of the, uh, interpretation, which says, I interpret this to mean that the ending fund balance at the end of the year must be no less than the beginning fund balance. And that, that, that portrayed to me a situation where the, the, the policy asked for the fund balance to constantly grow every year and never come down. Um, a, and that's not possible with the way the state has you do this. So, what I thought I would do to clarify this was more or less quote what the state law required. So it gets it out there, so people see, you know, what it is we're trying to do, rather than constantly add to fund balance and never use it. Where in fact, every year, we're required to take the two years prior, as it works out, fund balance and apply it against the next year's budget, um, to reduce the amount to be raised by the ed fund. So I, uh, in the yellow section on this, just a single sheet of paper, um, I described how I think this should read. And it's just attempts to clarify the, the state law and the audit practice, and to strike the, the, the current language, which I think gives, uh, like I say, a kind of a, a wrong connotation. And then I tried to be brief in detail policy eight. They probably could have gone on and on a lot more, but I, I had, in addition to the, um, um, note that it would be the prior year's, um, fund balance we're worried about. But I also wanted to change the word surplus to fund balance, because auditors, the accounting profession doesn't like the term surplus anymore. They did away with it. State law still has it, but I think we should change it ourselves. And the other question that came up was there's a, there was a question about the, the num, the number in here for the fund balance from FY sixteen, I think, versus the amount that was in the budget for the eighteen, um, reduce, reduction in fund balance, redu, redu, reduction in ed fund. And where that comes from is exhibit four. And exhibit four is, I think it's page seventeen of this document. Front of the last page, the second of the last page, yeah. And the number that was in the budget was five fifty-three, four thirty-five. And you might want to ask why that's not the five sixteen, nine oh one, that's on page two. I won't go back to it. But there were two components of the fund balance at the end of FY sixteen. There was a non-spendable fund balance of thirty-six thousand, five thirty-four. I'm on page seventeen. And a, an unassigned fund balance of five sixteen, nine oh one. That totaled to the five fifty-three, four thirty-five that was in the budget. In, in fact, I, I'm confused about how the auditor wants us to present this. Um, but we use the five fifty-three in the budget document for FY eighteen budget, and it's equal to the five sixteen and the thirty-six thousand. The thirty-six thousand, I don't want to get too deep into this, but it was a prepaid expense account that, the idea of the prepaid expense account is you're able to make expenditures in FY fifteen that are actually logically, um, by accounting rules, dedicated to FY sixteen. And it shows up as an asset in your FY sixteen audit report. I'm probably getting the years wrong here. FY seventeen is where it belongs. So that, that amount of money offset expenses in the FY seventeen year, the thirty-six thousand, five thirty-four. And, and, and to make a long story short, when we described this situation to the auditor as part of the FY seventeen draft audit, he fixed this problem, was, was still able to fix it, because the FY eighteen audit won't happen again for another six months. Um, so he's included five fifty-three, four thirty-five as a reserve fund balance to offset the eighteen budget, even though this number was five sixteen, nine oh one. And I know that's terribly confusing, but it, it's a consequence of this using money from two years ago to offset the two years hence, um, ed fund transfer. So there's, uh, so the first part, I don't know how you actually go about changing detail policies, but this is my recommendation to change detail policy eight. And I think that the interpretation now, it, I think, is more clear. And, and the other explanation about the, the numbers, um, there's really nothing to change on that. But it, it, it is a little more complicated than you'd think.
I mean, to, to change policy, we have to warn it a couple of times. I don't think we have to change the policy if you've interpreted it to tell us what surplus means.
So as long, as long as we're changing the interpretation.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, I mean, your interpretation makes it clear that we're talking about fund balance when you're talking about surplus. So, I don't need, I don't think we need to go through that process if your explanation is taking care of that.
That's fine with me if it's fine with you. I just think it should have been a little bit more to the point of what state law asks for.
But, but the interpretation accomplishes that.
What does that, yeah. So that was the, that was the big, that was the big question that came up last time.
I think this is great. I think it clarifies, yeah, I think it, it clarifies the questions I had in it. And the, the number of questions also clarifies the questions that we were getting during budget process, so that's great.
So, the only thing I have a question on is specific to, um, number seven, detail policy. We had a situation come up, um, on March seventh. The, um, third-party administrator for, um, uh, family savings accounts, uh, and HRA is the health reimbursement arrangements, or accounts, uh, notified school districts, about eighty percent of the school districts and, and supervisory unions had elected future planning associates out of Williston as their third-party administrator. And they notified school districts that, um, they were getting out of that part of the business. So, um, the business office and HR and a number of folks are working very hard to. to identify a transition partner, and a lot of work's being done to accommodate that. However, it did highlight something around detail policy seven to me. And I don't, I don't know actually how this was handled, but it sounds like there was an upfront payment made to future, well, typically what future planning is paid for would be per month per employee fee to administer this, is that correct?
Well, the way this, there's a couple of different payments that go to the third-party administrator. The kind of straightforward one that you might want to think about is, I think it's, I did, I'm not going to, I think it's $3.70 per month per employee for the administration of the plan. And that amounts to about $27,000 a year. So, I think that falls below the threshold of the, say, bidding out kind of thing. The other piece, the much bigger piece, is the idea that the district, instead of paying an insurance company a million dollars a month or whatever the number is, and then the insurance company goes and pays providers with it, we're now paying the insurance company like $800,000 a month. Well, it's not even, you know, these are the wrong numbers. But, and then we're paying the third-party administrator. At the outset, we paid actually $72,000 to fund HRAs. And then the third-party administrator pays providers from that amount of money. And when that $72,000 gets low, he sends us a bill saying that we spent that first $72,000 on this, 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 this. He gives us a big, long list of medical expenses paid to providers, which might total $68,000. So, at that point, we're obligated to send $68,000 to the administrator, who then uses that lump sum of money to pay claims for the next four to six weeks. That's standard in this industry for all of these outfits. I think what your question is, being an amount over $50,000, should that not have come to the board for approval at some point in the process? But the approval the board gave the administration at the outset of this was that things related to employee contract obligations, the health benefit, the retirement benefit, the salaries, the taxes that go against, that are part of payroll, those are not held up for a board review. You're contractually obligated to pay those, and the policy says that. And we have never brought health insurance payments and those sorts of things here for approval like that. The policy goes on to say the things that need to be approved by the board, and they're listed as dollars for construction, dollars for equipment, and for tuition and contract services. So, those are the items that we've brought to you routinely. Every couple of months, you see them on the agendas. So, I don't think we violated the policy with this.
We didn't make it, wasn't, was it seven, it wasn't 70 altogether? I mean, it was chunked over time, was it not?
Well, I did, I did dig out the detail. And it looks like there was a $72,000 initial deposit in funding of HRAs. We're on the hook for something like, if memory serves me correctly, I think we're going to estimate about $900,000 on an annual basis for monies going through HRAs. And if you divide that by 12, you come up with about $70,000. And that's what, what future planning came up with, that $72,790. And you'll see that in the future as these plans, you know, go forward.
Yeah, I do wonder, though, does, does that meet the criteria, though, of contract services?
I think it's, I think it's almost identical to the exemption enjoyed by the Blue Cross Blue Shield bill. Instead of one big bill going to Blue Cross Blue Shield for $700,000 a month, which you, which you never saw, now 600 of that is.
We see that in the account register.
You aren't, you aren't asked to approve it.
Correct.
Instead of seeing, instead of that going straight to Blue Cross Blue Shield, you're now seeing, say, $700,000 going to Blue Cross Blue Shield and $70,000 going to the third-party administrator to pay the same, pay the same claims, just in a different fashion.
Well, isn't, isn't there a fundamental difference, though, in that Blue Cross Blue Shield is the provider offered through VHI, but the third-party administrator is selected by the district?
I don't think the policy is that specific. And you might, you might well say, and I think it might well happen, that in the future, VHI might provide the TPA. That's the way it was, you know, in places, other places I've worked where the, the insurance, self-insurance pool packages up that TPA with their own claims processing. But I, I don't, you know, if you, if you changed LTD carriers so that maybe you were paying, one group was going to Liberty Mutual, and another one was going to Prudential for their LTD coverage, it wouldn't change how that, that payment was processed, you know, by the school district, I don't think.
Well, does it, does it change our obligation, though, to evaluate the contracted service provider?
Well, if you get to that angle, I think, I certainly would have appreciated there be more TPAs in this market at the time we were looking so we could make a good comparison. The way this came down, like in the last couple of weeks of December, where we had to make up our decisions and the decision was compressed, there was, we were aware of two vendors that could handle this. And one of them self-disqualified by not being able to handle the plan design for the HRAs we used. So, we were pretty much required to use this, the second vendor, and we didn't, didn't really have a choice in the matter. We have found, since this problem arose, that our chosen administrator put us on to his upstream processor, who we think is going to be an excellent choice to take this over. But that's kind of still to come.
Yeah, I'm not entirely persuaded that that was, wasn't a compliance issue with seven. I understand, I understand the explanation. I don't know how to evaluate it any differently, to tell you the truth.
I mean, my worry would be as if we were to do it, you know, where it needed to get approval, we could have lags in the ability to pay, you know, pay a claim, right?
Oh, yeah.
If the claim, so, I think this is where it falls outside. It falls under the contractual obligation. I don't, I do feel like the, if it's claim history, it would be nice to have a better understanding of what the claim history by quarter or something of that would be.
Well, and I know, I know we're going through a period where we don't have the claims history. So, maybe, maybe the real observation here is when, you know, that maybe this is an area that when the upfront payment was, was being made and it was different than the insurance provider, there might have just been a discussion around, this is going to be an unusual event, and you're going to, you're going to see, assuming future planning stayed in the business, you're going to see this kind of amount until we figure out the claims history.
Yeah.
You're going to see some level of amount shifting from Blue Cross Blue Shield to the TPA. So, that's maybe what that resolution could have been there. Okay, I appreciate the conversation. So, would the board like to go through this policy? All right.
I don't know, did Steve need to leave?
All right, so, under Financial Conditions and Activities 2.4, "With respect to the actual ongoing financial condition activities, the superintendent shall not cause or allow the development of financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in N's policies." So, Detail Policy 1, expend more funds than have been received or budgeted in the fiscal year-to-date. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 2, incur debt in an amount greater than can be repaid by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within 90 days. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number three, use any long-term reserves. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 4, conduct inter-fund shifting in amounts greater than can be restored to a condition of discrete fund balances by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within 30 days. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Number five, fail to settle payroll and debts in a timely manner. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 6, allow tax payments or other government-ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurately filed. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Thank you for the process, by the way. Detail 7, make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than $25,000 or the addition of half an FTE teacher. Splitting orders to avoid this limit is not acceptable. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance? So, eight, is this going to require, do we want to change, modify the language on detail policy to say, what's the new language, to say undesignedated fund balance versus surplus?
We can't change it, but you can so note it, and we'll change it next time. We keep it in the interpretation.
So, with.
Is it in the interpretation, or are we talking about changing the detail policy? My point was, my point is that we don't have to change the policy if we've got it interpreted properly.
Right.
Okay, but we may want to make a note to modify that for consistency. So, with the current designation of spend surplus, reasonable interpretation? Adequate data?
Yes.
Well, actually, the interpretation, we're accepting the new one?
Yeah.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Nine, fail to aggressively pursue receivables after a reasonable grace period. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
And Detail Policy 10, accept non-resident tuition students unless tuition is being paid by other Vermont school districts or the state. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
And the overall policy, which I've already read, reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
So, we'll make a note on the new language on interpretation and a note to revisit the detail policy eight.
Can I ask a question? Have we ever had a non-resident person want to come and pay tuition to go to school here?
Have we made that request?
Or has a parent or perhaps somebody from New York or Canada?
I don't believe so. I can't speak to the history, but not my time.
This means, like, people from Georgia, another island, no?
No.
Well, they, those schools.
Those are undesignedated high schools, that's right. They pay tuition. Somebody who wants to tuition in, we've not, we've not allowed, we've not had that happen.
So, if somebody lives in another town that already has a high school and says, "Well, I'm rich, I can spend."
We have choice, we have choice, a choice component that we do go through under Act, what's the name? No, it used to be 129. So, there is a provision in that choice option. There's a specific language that we follow there. So, we have some reciprocal agreement under that. Act 150-something, I think.
Okay.
It changed from 129 to that.
I was curious.
So, David, in the interest of time, and I hate to do this.
Want to push that one?
Can, can we look at the balance of the agenda and kind of see what can be modified at this point?
Just a clarification on the policy, we're just looking at the interpretation. We're now looking at the rest of the report this evening, if that makes any difference in terms of your time.
The self-evaluation, you know, you could, I mean, that could wait and put it on the fourth. I mean, we are compressing, and so, remember, we haven't, we didn't get our other meeting in. So, we could, we could move that to the fourth.
Let's do that. If we're only looking at interpretation unless there's any reason to do that tonight, why don't we modify, why don't we put that later?
Okay.
And I think we can move through the balance of this.
We've done the future agenda, I think, yeah.
All right, I'll hold on the monitoring report here. Okay, so, we will move to Agenda Item 17, studying the agenda for the April 4th meeting. We already talked about three additional items to consider. Would the board be comfortable if I meet with David and make some recommendations for when these agenda items would get covered?
We did have some things in there that you wanted to. We talked a little bit about whether or not, we've got to add that to future on safety and security.
Yes.
Also, visual and performing arts and a VSAC wellness thing is a piece on there. But we can work on putting that in there.
That's on the April 4th meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I jumped onto the agenda.
Sorry.
So, are we on the fourth? Do you have what you need for that agenda?
I think so, we'll pull those things that we are not doing tonight, and we'll move those over.
And I'll, I'll work with you on that agenda as well as future agenda items and when to address those. All right, any changes or comments on Agenda Item 19, the minutes of the February 21st meeting? Seeing none, those are approved by consensus. And Agenda Item 20, we need to do that, correct?
Yes.
So, this is consider amendment to the SBA's Section 125 Plan.
Do you want to give a little highlight of that, John, for the board?
Yeah, the Section 125 Plan describes how, frankly, the district administers its ability to shelter health and dependent care expenses from taxable income for employees, frankly. And that was set up originally back in probably the 80s. And at that point, it sheltered health insurance premiums, contributions to flexible spending accounts by employees, and dependent care expenses, qualified dependent care expenses by employees. And with the advent of health savings accounts, if a district were to offer those to its employees, those would have to be added to the Section 125 Plan. While a lot of the world went to HSAs four, five, eight years ago, we hadn't done it until this year. So, we were advised that we needed to amend our Section 125 Plan. This one is for administrators. We have another one coming at a future agenda for other employees, simply to add the option of an HSA to the mix for, for the Section 125 Plan treatment. We don't have a lot of employees doing this, but even if you have one, you have to change your, your plan. So, I'd appreciate it if the board would see fit to approve this amendment fairly pro forma.
So, this is actually an adopting resolution in the packet?
Right.
So, it resolves that the employer amend the SBA's Section 125 Plan as set forth in the Amendment Number One, effective January 1, 2018, for the exclusive benefit and incentive of its employees, and is hereby approved and adopted, and that an authorized representative of the employer is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the administrator of the plan one or more counterparts of the amendment. And this plan is currently administered by future planning?
For the next two or three weeks.
So, will this go to the new administrator, then, as well?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion is approved. All right. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 21, the Consent Agenda. We've already had a motion to shift the Eric Stone leave request to 21A, so we're looking at, do you want to go through those, David?
So on the Consent Agenda, you have Michael Martin. He is the 1.0 Director of Learning. Again, this is, and I provided board members some information specific to process committee folks' salary and, and that. So again, this is a replacement of Stuart. So again, that's some clarity on that one. Bill White is a 1.0 Social Studies teacher, and he has requested, pretty atypical, but a leave of absence for him from October 1 through October 29. So his, his leave is requested there. And then retirements and resignations, Phyllis Stambolian. Again, longtime employee of ours who has had a lot of connections to our high school, and also to Rick Markcott is retiring. And Barbara Yurk, also a 1.8 mathematics coach from Rick Markcott, is also retiring. So those, those are those identified on the Consent Agenda. And I, I would say, you know, on your behalf, we would certainly, Phyllis Stambolian, a longtime, Barbara Yurk has also been, been a shorter term, but would like to, on your behalf, write up letters of appreciation for further service, if you so approve.
This is not one for action per se, correct?
The Consent Agenda, you know, it's a, it's Consent Agenda, right.
Yep.
Can we talk about the, the Bill White request?
If you want to take it off.
You'll have to make a motion, or is it a motion, or?
Should make the motion to take it off.
Yeah, motion to take that off, the Consent Agenda.
Unless he has, if you have a question, you don't have to, but if we want to discuss-
Questions are fine.
I guess, you know, I think if, if we, if we start making one approval like this, are we starting to set a precedent of requesting all sorts of kinds of requests for-
I don't, I don't feel like this is precedent-setting. I mean, this is, this is, again, past, we, we have not done this. This is, again, a longtime employee who's asking for a specific piece as far as student instruction. We think, we certainly have the, the ability to make sure that that's going to be there. We do, I do not support this on a ongoing basis for, for everybody. I think this is a, this is an individual particular case.
Okay, so, so what happens if another teacher comes, or a staff member comes to us and makes a similar request, and it's denied for whatever reason? And then, guess the union involved?
This is, these are, these are not grievable. You know, this is superintendent discretion and board action. Obviously, you could put me in, if I was doing it on a regular basis, you could be saying no. And you could also be appropriately responding to me through, you know, consequences, et cetera.
Would you grant this?
Well, I, I, it's, it's on there, and therefore I've, I've, I've said yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I have said yes, although it wouldn't be in front of you. But I'm, that's not in my, you're, you're the final say of that.
Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, the Consent Agenda is approved. 21A, Eric Stone leave request for a second year.
So I did, in your packet, or by your place, actually, is his letter. Again, this is his second year. He's currently out this year. So this would be a request for next year, just to be clear. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions specific to this. Again, I did, when I provided you this information.
And what's your recommendation, David?
You know, I, I'm, I'm not in support of, of a two-year leave. That said, it's not, does not rest in my, in my court. It's, it's the board. The reason being is that I think anytime somebody leaves for a year, we have to fill it with a one-year-only contract, which means they don't have all the rights and privileges. A second year continues that, and it, and it makes it difficult for us to hold on to an individual when they may have another job open up that's permanent and more sustainable. I'm in general agreement that having the opportunity for people to go away for a year, I think, you know, or a period of time, brings back some valuable information to us on things we're doing, things we could be doing better. But that said, I think it becomes harder, all, all weighed together, on looking at the, the total gain for the district. So that said, you know, Eric did provide you with some specific things around things that he's learning, and some deliverables that he would see that he would like to bring back. That was on his own doing, so it, it again is before you.
So, I find Eric's reasoning and some of the things that he's put forth compelling. However, I've found, the, the last couple of times we've had people come and ask for a second year, I've found what they've said compelling. And, and, and we did not grant a second year in those situations. I, I also feel that there, that perhaps this could have been, I don't know if it would have changed anything if it could have been a request for two years, because it seems like this particular instance that there may have been some foreknowledge that it was going to be two years, and we could have perhaps dealt with it differently if we understood a year ago if it was going to be two years. So yeah, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I would uphold your recommendation.
I was not led to believe that, that it was at the onset going to be a two-year commitment. I was, none of my communication was with, with, with Eric was specific to two years. It was only about the year. That said, there, there may have been other conversations outside of what I was aware of about that, and that may be.
Yeah, I may be misstating. I had heard that, but I don't remember where that source is, so forget that. But taking that aside, I mean, the, the fact is we've had some compelling stories and compelling reasons to allow a second year in some other instances, and it's, it's not a good precedent. And we, to approve it, we have set the right precedent by not approving a second year.
And this doesn't, I mean, he's been a, been a- Has been a great asset as a teacher and does a good job. So I think that's really important to so note. Therefore, we want him back, you know? And we'd like him to be back in our classroom, giving us back the, some of the things that he's, he's currently already learned. Obviously, he has to make that choice. We've issued contracts, as I've said already. We issued them last Friday, so they're, they're due in. This is in part what's, you know, prompting people, helping people feel secure about next year, and also helping people, you know, make some decisions which may have been earlier than they expected. This being one maybe possible case.
And I think there's also always the question of there's no guarantee that next year we won't, he won't be coming back the following year.
Yeah.
There's never that, and I think that's the past situations as well. You keep that uncertainty going for that particular position.
What has happened in the past where we've denied a second year? Have those people come back, or are they likely not to come back?
I don't actually know my, the history there. I know, I know. I know one instance, more recent, you know, to, to this request was that it was a year, and then there was a second request. We said no, and that particular teacher, you know, resigned from the contract. So there's, under my time, that's been pretty consistent. I mean, I've been consistent, not pretty. I've been consistent in not granting, not recommending a second year. And I think the board passed, and I don't know how present, because I think maybe Martin Elizabeth had been on to say, you know, to uphold that. I can't speak to, you know, time, time before me, but I've, I've been pretty consistent in saying, one year with good reason, and obviously it has to be good reason. The second year, I've said, I've recommended no. Thus far, the board has, has supported that. That said, you know, Eric, Eric has provided you the information and deliverables and things of that nature, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Just that I would be, I would be supportive of your recommendation, David, I think. Makes sense not to approve it, in my opinion.
Alex?
I agree with Bridgette, pardon.
So this is, this is not an action item, per se?
Well, it is now, because we took it off. So we should act on it, because it was, again, we added it to the Consent Agenda and then pulled it off. It should now have its own action.
Okay.
And I would also say, I'm sorry not to have him back, but I think we have to stay consistent with this. And I move that we don't approve the request for a second year.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yes.
All right, Agenda Item 22, AP Orders. I'll give the whole list, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Any questions for clarification? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 23. We have an AP order checked to Howard Center for Human Services in the amount of $292,425.03.
Now, I, I'm going to move, I usually don't move, but I feel I should move because I was curling for him. Does that make it the Howard Center challenge on the 10th of March? I had a team, and we curled, and I don't know if you remember the picture that was in the bulletin board for at least a long time, that we made it into the finals a long time ago. This was the last one that Howard Center had. And I don't know how much you all know about curling. But, but in nine frames, is that what it's called? Yeah, nine frames, we scored one point. We got one point. We were terrible. The first three times, wait, wait, the first three times I did this, I made it into the, into the quarterfinals and then the finals. And this year, it was terrible. But because of my fabulous fans, we won the Spirit Award. So, so this is not quid pro quo, but I move that we approve. The account's payable. It's not a conflict of interest.
Sweeping ice, right?
It is not just sweeping ice.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all.